This conference will now be recorded.
He's the one who called about the Zoom.
Here, I'm here.
Mr. Kish.
Here.
Mr. Jensen.
Ray, are you still on?
He's on, not muted, just need to identify himself, Ray. He is on. Ms. Holloway.
Here.
And Ms. Salkow.
Here.
He's in the restroom.
Ray, I do need you to acknowledge that you're here. I think we can go ahead and
Yeah.
hope that he can participate.
Still acknowledge.
I'll double check. Let's
Yeah.
let's go ahead and make a motion to allow Supervisor Jensen and Supervisor LaShir to participate remotely.
So I second that. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. All right, you guys can participate.
Pledge allegiance, we stand.
Pledge allegiance to the liberty of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next would be approval of the agenda.
We have three additions and I apologize for a lot of this. Gabby's and her whole family's been out with COVID.
She's bad.
No, she's bad, but she wasn't around yesterday because she had something she had to do with as well. So anyhow, that's why you're getting piles of information now. Most of it's just statement. It's just But we'd like to add 8D review of the CIP, 9C, which is a discussion or review of your fiscal year 2021 audit, and 5B, which is the May 20th minutes that need to be reviewed and approved. Okay? Yes, sir.
I was wondering, what's 17? I don't have that on my agenda. Oh wait a minute, yeah, 17.
We don't have a 17.
There is no 17.
That's why you don't have it.
Well, okay, you added 18, 19, and 20. That's why I was
No, no, he added number nine, a C for the fiscal audit.
Yes.
And then on number eight, he added D for the CIP review.
Okay.
And then five, he added the approval of the May 22nd minutes.
Okay, that's fine. I thought they were 18, 19, and 20. That's why I asked about 17.
Mr. Pierce, I don't know if we've got difficulty. I see on the screen Mr. Jensen has is on, but I don't see that his mic is and I don't know if he could respond or not, but seeing him on the screen, can the board still vote to allow him?
Absolutely.
Yeah, he spoke to me earlier.
Absolutely. The fact that he did that.
I talked to him, I said, I am not, and I am speaking up.
Yeah, and Cal, whether he's on there now or comes on in five minutes, the board can still make a motion to approve his full participation in finding exceptions. As well as for Sam.
Is there any chance, Tony, you could move down one seat?
Yeah.
You're having complaints that you speak so softly.
I do.
And so you could be right in front of the speakers and everyone online.
I will talk louder when I talk.
I'm also going to ask the audience, because we have two board members online, if they could come between this table and that table, because I know these might really pick you up well. And remember to say who you are and where you live, okay?
Did Ray say, can he hear us?
Yeah. Said he can hear you.
Can we just stand here?
He needs a new phone. No, he spoke to me earlier.
Yeah. Ray, I don't know if you, so if you can hear us, if you go up into your settings, make sure on the program, make sure you're not muted. It doesn't show that you're muted. It just
Cal, I believe he's in a car driving.
Okay. All right, well, at least he can hear us.
Okay.
Madam Chairman, Cal, if I could also request amend the agenda for under 11, add 11B, consideration of a resolution. And I have a number for me, Cal, with regards to the sale of the parcel 13, where it makes some point with various exhibits. So that would be consideration of approval of that resolution, which is needed for closing of the sale. I'll check my email, Cal, we'll see what the resolution number is.
It's 07.
Okay, thank you. Resolution 2022-07. Thank you.
Okay.
Any other changes or additions?
Motion to approve the amended agenda.
I second that. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Ray, if you have any negative votes, if you could just text Michelle, otherwise we'll show you as a positive vote on these issues.
Yeah, and when that happens, Michelle would need to say that he voted negatively or neg. Just so we have that on the record.
Audience comments on the agenda. I have all that. Audience comments period. The, we have one, and it is Tim Red.
Reed.
Reed. Okay. If you could just come over.
Yeah, between the table and this table.
Just real quickly, I
You're Tim Reed and you're
Tim Reed, 199 K Drive. I don't hear that well, anyway. I never heard any discussion on on the ponds about just draining them. We're not rich. We don't have a lot of money. Why don't we just drain them each year? And sit down and put $40,000 in to aerate them.
Aye.
Is there any discussion of that?
No, no, there is. I mean, there could be on the agenda under field managers, which have already been approved, but can I comment real quick, Madam Chairman?
Sure.
The, those ponds are part of your stormwater system and they're permitted. You can't drain them. You can't alter them without a permit from the county. They have to hold water. Homes are
No, I understand. They're wet in the dry season. And that's when we have the problems, I thought. Is why not they're draining that?
And you still have the problem during the rainy season.
Well, during the, during the dry season too, they're going to fill up whatever water table is, so there probably will be some water.
When the people were complaining about the smell, it wasn't during the rainy season.
Just made it because they were low, but
Didn't know there was smell.
Complaint was from Sam that they were turning green.
Yeah.
The color.
And you can't drain them during the drought season?
Well, you The water
Water table is moving it up.
The level.
Yeah. Any other comments? Can you come up here, please? No, you need to come up here so that
There is comments at the end of the meeting, but we'd like you to sign in.
Any comments from online?
Here we are. So moving on to the minutes.
Our approval of the minutes. Let's do the May 22nd first.
Have we missed that or something?
Yeah, it was wrong.
Yeah, it, the wrong ones, yes. So now I'm here to review the packet I was on vacation. So when I was looking at them at the meeting, I said, these are wrong. And I sent them to you immediately when I got back to the office. And said, these are the ones that should have been in your packet. And here they are again.
Any comments on the May 22nd minutes?
Yeah, I have one. I have a question.
Okay, Sam.
124. J.C. Sanchez would like the board to make sure there's no dedicated easements, because boat access will be developed in the area of 29 K's. Is that what the physical address of parcel B is? It says 29 K's Drive. I just want to make sure that's the physical address of K, of parcel B.
Do you know that address?
It's not.
It's not the
189, I think, or 289. Are you sure he's not talking about his own personal home?
His personal home is right next to mine. It's 227.
There is a 29 K's Drive.
Okay, she just didn't hear it
Yeah.
properly, so we can make that change. You developed, we could say developed on his property on K's Drive.
Yes.
That's fine.
Yeah, that's good.
Good catch.
Any others?
We accept the minutes as amended?
I second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next would be the June 17th minutes.
I have a question on 55. The question is, if you look at 54 directly above it, the reparations cost will be shared by the homeowners and the CID. Was that not part of the original motion that that's way it was going to be for Sunset K?
That wasn't decided until the last meeting.
Which was the 17th.
Right.
That was, yeah. That's part of those, that minutes, those minutes, I think. That is the 17th. I just thought that the end of 54, which was the reparations cost will be shared by the homeowners and the CID was part of is it Michelle's original, yeah, on, yeah, on Michelle's motion for the for Sunset K and the K's restoration, I mean, the K's work. I know we agreed that
54 is just a comment.
Right. What I'm saying is on the motion on 55, I believe that the cost was to be shared between, on Sunset K, was to be shared between the CID and the homeowners at 162 and 163.
Yes, that was the motion.
Yeah, that's
But it's not in the motion, is what I'm saying. The fact that there's supposed to be the sharing of the reparations.
Cost, they're not there.
Okay.
It just needs to be added.
Yeah.
Just think that's, that one sentence on 54 and we'll be done with it at 55 also.
Bingo. That's what I wanted. Thank you, David.
There's a sentence here.
Okay.
Yeah, and I have a question on that. Who's the lead on that change? Is it the engineer or is it the homeowners?
Well, I've got a letter going to the homeowners that they're going to have to accept this offer that the board has made. And I just have, got roughed out. I've got Tony's responses, Dave's responses, and it just has to be finalized.
We had trouble getting an email from one of the parties.
Yeah.
We've got it now, I think.
Okay, yeah, we're, we're, it'll probably go out if not this afternoon, you know, one day after.
So in the letter, who takes the lead in this? The homeowners or the engineer?
The homeowner has to agree.
Right. As far as the payment, the homeowners are forced to be involved, but as far as the engineering plans, bidding it out, the district will take the lead on that.
Okay. Okay, so if the homeowner is responsible, then we reimburse the homeowner for our cap when the cost
They're supposed to reimburse us, because we'll be entering into a contract with a contractor who other work too. We'll have us together with some of the other remedial work.
So that they're
David, isn't this part of the, the meeting we're having with South Florida Water District this, next week?
We'll discuss that a little bit at the South Florida meeting, but at this point, we're looking at doing some square cleaning out, cleaning out from the control structures, all this remedial work.
Right.
Looking at a bid alternate, also maybe to do some piping here and there.
Right.
All right, so we're adding that sentence to the motion.
Yeah, that will be included. I'll look at it when we get that included. But the intent is that that last sentence above 55 will be inserted into the motion.
Any other comments? I have a quick question. This is about approving of the minutes. Okay, never mind. I'll wait till later. Okay.
Okay.
I make up a motion to approve the minutes with those two changes for June 17th.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This landscape maintenance. Top it.
Good morning, everyone. The we did their trial run on last week and with Michelle. We actually picked on all the pressures of the trees that are with the addresses. I don't know. I think I'm right on that. I think it's better to contact the owners to see if they want to take action before we touch, we go on their properties. I think, you know, but we do have all the addresses. If you don't, if you guys get that on the door.
Sunset K on there.
Definitely. There were violations.
Yeah, they beat my truck up. Every day I go down that street.
A little tree or one of the palm trees?
It's palm trees.
The palm trees. I do have the address of the road and I would say contact them when you have to help them out.
We're getting feedback from your Can you mute yourself until, but we're getting feedback. I don't know if we use a tablet and a phone, but on your system, you're getting
He told me, hey, Cal, he told me he was going to be on Bluetooth, so that's probably where the, where the feedback's coming from.
Okay. Ray, just mute yourself until you're ready to tweet. Okay.
Sorry.
All right, no problem. Your estimates that we did are, are completed. We had to come back and plant 10 plants on the Newport wall because it was standing water. The guys already took care of that. I brought in some dirt. We elevated soil there. It was just from that heavy rain. I mean, we had about two or three inches of standing water there, so that got taken care of. We did the storm, storm drain cleanouts. I looked at it with Michelle that day. We did it the same day after you sent the email. I got the crew up here. And that's pretty much it. There is still more work. David, are you going to look at those?
Yeah, we're going to be looking at those. Like, we probably are looking at those and not, what we'll probably do is go ahead and put that out, bid with some of the other work.
Yeah, so you'll put that all together. For right now, the worst one was the one with Tom Trotta down at Wilderness.
Yes.
Yeah, Wilderness, he came out. He was happy with what was done, at least for right now, so.
Oh, I drove by yesterday. It's raining good there now. Yeah. No water on the road.
I know we got deteriorated last night here, so I
Yeah, I was last night.
Yeah, there's a lot of, you know, but that's, you'll figure that out. You put it together, so it's not a big deal. So, I mean, that's pretty much it. I mean, we're just somewhere down the news, lots of rain.
Yeah, I have one question on that. I don't have it here. On the field report,
Yeah.
there were two mentions. I think one was out to the well. That it's, it's not trimmed or anything.
Yeah, there were a couple, also with dry retention truck.
Right.
And, but, you know, we pay monthly on
It's on the contract, yeah.
I'll just have to look at it and see what needs to be done. If it's there, it's on the wellfield, like I can get the guy to
Well, I think that was, that or the other item was must be done before rainy season.
But if it's, if it's growing a lot right now, I mean, everything's growing like crazy, so it might need a little pushback or something, but I will, I will get the guys out.
Yeah, I kind of hear. The bright retention pod is, is that the one by the, by the plant?
Yeah.
It may be hard to do because it might be standing water there now.
Yes.
The other one was the wellfield road. It's Oh, brilliant. That's, I can get that. That we haven't been able to all beat out of standing water. And it's been like that for a while.
That's all year. It's actually, it's been, I don't know.
Do we still have some of that water turning into that tension area? So I have, what I've been doing, the, the irrigation tanks that overflow, instead of overflowing, we've been dumping it into that retention pond. Because that's what it's there for. So there has been some water.
I guess the point, Robert, is that it's something the CID pays you guys to do. And I understand if you can't do it, but we should get a present for that.
I mean, I don't see, you know, I mean, it's I can schedule when you, when you want to do it, and I'll just, we'll, we won't go, but I'll so cut the grass. How much is it going to take? Three, four times? So regardless, if you, if I can maintain it, I can, I'll do it, but it's going to take me much longer to cut the grass right now with all that bedding.
I know one of those items is three times a year.
Yeah, that's the retention pot three times.
Yeah, hasn't been done at all.
No, we haven't been able to blow it.
For the whole
We just haven't been, it's just been wet. I mean, I could
It's been wet every drive.
With the sun, but the
We understand that. We're just saying though, that if you're not, we're paying for it, if you're not doing it or able to do it, we understand it. But there should be a credit back to the district for that.
I can look into it. It's not possible.
Yeah, okay.
You know, I can look into it. I mean, I just, I know it's part of it, but I just haven't been able to, so, and I mean, it's not such a good area.
And I, we spread it out where we fall months to fall, just, you know, so that it's not one big bill. But there
I can do like
I can do it three times a year.
That's fine. I'll look into it. I can, if we have broken down on the pond that we do it, so I can look at it and just do a credit for that. Yeah, we just haven't been able to do it. It's just been wet. So I will look at that and we'll give you guys a credit.
Yeah, take the amount of that, multiply it by four.
Yes.
The full, right. And then if you divide that by three, that's how much you get.
You know, because the other one that we haven't been able to do is the one that they did size over the hill part on the back by the gun range. That has also been just really wet right now. But I mean, you know, we, we
Probably do it in the fall. We can roll that though, that.
No, we do that separately.
That might be separate.
Yeah, that's So I'm just letting you guys know. But that's, yeah, that's pretty much it. Nothing regard, we just contact the owners that these are taking care of and, you know, these are all the hardwood trees that need to be
Here is, Robert just gave us an estimate of $1,500 to do all that trimming. And, but if he's going to contact residents
Yeah.
first, then how about if we, as opposed to acting on this, just make it, it's free with it, Terry and I'll discuss it, you know, but
Yeah, I guess if the owners are in agreement and want it done, then they'll be owners.
Right, we can build it directly without having to involve CID.
Yeah.
Some of these owners, I can contact myself that I, I do their residents.
Yeah.
And the other ones, I mean, I, there's, I think it's happened. Yeah, you with us, who you can
Right.
I'll send you an email. We'll contact from our side and then the rest of you guys.
The letter of contact.
I just don't think they realize how fast they grow this.
No, probably not.
They're probably not even here, so.
Do you want to look into through columns too? Is that what you're saying?
Well, that was going to be my next question. Why are we only looking at oaks hanging too low?
Because really, I mean, I, and I got to see what, which area you're talking about.
Oh, you'll see it. Yeah, because they're not here in this time of year.
All at the same time, but it's not
It's someone, it's homeowners.
It's a homeowner's. It's, it's too close to the road. And now that the, there's all homes on the block, I have to wait for people to come, to leave before I can drive.
I guess, Robert, if you can look at it, if it's too close to the road, it's probably at the road right away, and it's your tree, even if they planted it.
Yeah, but even if it isn't in the right way, it's, it's just these pumps, they come out and then they fall down, then they drop, fall off, that kind of pump.
I think they're palmettos, Terry. Those big, those big palmettos, you're talking about on, on your, on your block, right?
Yes, as you turn
They're planted on his property, but they're so big, they just extend over into the, into the roadway.
Right, right.
Only question I have is, what happens if a homeowner says, oh, I don't want you to trim it? You know, we can contact the homeowners and tell them that we're going to trim them, but whose responsibility and eventual cost is it? Is it ours or is it the homeowners, one way or the other?
I, I think if it's a homeowner's tree, we can't do it without their permission.
If it's, if it's extending into a public right of way and it becomes a safety issue, then you have the right to go in and trim it at your expense.
Correct, you have to, you have the right to trim it back, provided you don't kill it or cause damage, but you know, then you're
Yeah, that's a liability.
Correct, but you have the right to trim back to the, outside the, you have to edge it right away.
Well, I know these people. These people, like people that'll contact their
Right.
I think it's you. About cutting it back.
Right. I can do that. I mean, I could just bring it up to, it's actually better if you can just send them a letter, let them know, let's say, you know, that this year, you know, it's in the easement or whatever.
So what we're really telling the owner is, this is your financial responsibility. Do you want our person to do it, or do you want to hire somebody else to do it?
Correct. Proper way to handle it.
Yeah.
That's to let them know it's their financial responsibility.
Right, but if they're not going to do it, and you have a safety issue, you can go in and do it. I think I would just say that your tree is, needs to be trimmed because it's creating a safety issue and emergency vehicles, you know, and that you need to trim it. And then if they don't, we'll go in and trim it.
Yeah, I was just giving a timeframe, which they need to do.
Okay, and you're going to contact all of them you can.
I'll send them.
Those that you don't give us, we'll send a letter.
Right.
And you're going to include in your list, home trees that
Yeah, I'll look for those.
Well, you guys have to put an agreement on what time is mine.
Yeah, probably 30 days.
Well, you guys talk across the street. That makes it worse, I think.
What I'll do is, I'll put it, I'll put it together on my side and I'll send you who I contacted. Most of these persons are good about it, but just, you know, if we're doing the report, we'll just write numbers down, so, you know, so just, it's all there. I think, you know, half of those probably do, the other one probably just have to make a letter, let them know. So, but that's pretty much it, you know, as far as for that. I thank you guys.
Thank you. Next would be utility operations.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Even with that, if you could stand it
Yeah, right there. So it was
Yeah, you're probably pretty full.
Okay, perfect. Good morning. In compliance, the wastewater
See if you're on.
Uh, here's.
Uh, sure.
I will be, I'll see where to go. There we go, there we go, this is good. Good morning, in the wastewater plant, uh, all the requirements remaining, compliance on the, uh, water distribution, saying all the water compliance was met. In reuse, uh, everything was met, performance, we used two point, or treated two point eight million gallons of wastewater. On the water side, it shows this treat one point four million gallons, which I think is not correct, we had an issue with the flow meter, we had to replace the distribution flow meter, so that got our numbers off a little bit. In reuse, um, we sent out six point seven million gallons, and then we'll go back and correct that number for our, uh, reporting to the EEP on the water.
Did you ever tap me through the board?
Oh, yeah, I did, no. I apologize.
Thank you.
You're welcome. On the, uh, for usage, we used eight hundred thirty eight gallons, uh, in June, the month before, we used eight hundred gallons. A re-read, so the meters, we had, uh, two, we had a couple people questioned, the, we went out, did the, uh, tree search with the, the computer, showed them that it was correct, they were happy with it. Um, on preventative maintenance, we inspected all the pump stations, no issues, no issues on odor control, uh, security cameras are done, everything's good there. The membrane, I put on the last one, I think we spoke about it, we changed about it, the plan, on the, uh, number one RO. And the flow meter at the water plant, other than, nothing, uh, exciting happens back there, there's no.
Yeah, exactly.
No excitement, it's good, yes.
Yeah, one, one of the questions, you don't mind me jumping in, was, uh, the, I think when you put the security cameras along the back. The, there was some interest from some of the board members that wanted access to be able to check that, uh, check with the attorney, and, uh, basically, he's advised against. Uh, maybe Tony, you could expand on that?
Yeah, uh, I think I've mentioned before, board means that security devices, security plans, especially when you're dealing with utility facilities, are confidential and exempt under the public records law. Now, the ability of staff, agents, vendors, authorized personnel, people can utilize them, like I mentioned, this company, Cal, David, uh, and I would suggest that if there is to be any board member, if, if should be any board member, just be the chair. Uh, and, and for, in the chair's absence, the vice chair, so as to limit the, I'll, I'll call it the opportunity for that to be viewed by others, so I think that's, I've done that with other districts where. Manager, the attorney, the engineer, the vendor, the chair are the ones that look at it, which deem confidential or exempt from trade secrets in one example, so I think that would be an appropriate action, but not just a global for the board as a whole. Be my recommendation.
Yeah, I.
If at all, if the board wants it, I think it'd be very limited.
Rich is going through that now, so that he, but, uh, if there's additional training, we'd like to know what the board, uh, would be like limited to.
Yeah, and part of that would be to ensure also that all the users that would be accessing it have systems where they're, in fact, could be hacked or compromised or anything else, because that's always the issue.
That's what I worry about.
So much fun out there nowadays, isn't it?
I don't know, I, I worry about being asked, what I was worried about.
I'm, I'm not interested at all in having access.
Sam, uh, could you and Ray hear what was being discussed?
Yes, I, I, I don't see any need for the board to have access to that at all, uh, to the, to the cameras, I think, uh, you know, Cal and David and, uh, Mitch. They are the only ones should have access to it, we don't need act, I don't need to see it. And it doesn't make it any safer.
I don't, uh, I mean, I didn't see it, Mitch is, uh, pretty responsive, and, you know, he monitors things, holding out with, uh, my operations, and. One more thing to look at, probably won't bother you, right?
No, it's, I mean, we only look at it if it's an emergency, or if someone calls and is trying to get in, then we can pull it up.
Right.
Yeah, so.
If the board, uh.
Everything's reported on the DVR, so it, there's a history there, so if you ever want to see anything, it's there to be seen.
How much of a history?
So, I think it's a hundred and twenty days before it starts overriding.
Yeah.
If the board would like someone from the board, uh, he's mentioned the chairman and vice chairman.
In, in the absence of the chair, and I would limit it just to that.
Yeah, if you just want to go with a supervisor designated as, uh, you know, your, your, uh, security liaison from the board, I, you know, something like that. But, you know, we truly need some direction on what the board would like to do.
Well, I, I feel the, uh, the danger of, of being compromised.
Yeah, I would just keep it minimal, just minimal, and you.
Yeah, we only, we only want you guys to be responsible, you do that, and the only reason why I wouldn't take a look at it, except for a tropical storm or something, uh, where, where, you know, you know, we're gonna have internet service, right, it's gonna work, man.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Good luck.
I think that's, yeah, yeah.
So, yeah.
Well, Sam, you're in agreement, uh, Ray, your thoughts?
I'm in agreement.
Yeah, and, so, I don't know, I think he's, yeah, I see, my, uh, his mic is muted.
Yes, he's saying anything to you?
I'm only gonna cut.
I said, can you still hear, and he said, yes, and now I said, agree, question mark.
He said he agrees?
No, I'm asking, is it an agree, question mark?
But we had asked him only if he doesn't agree to contact her, so I'm gonna say he agrees.
Okay. Okay, so, the board, uh, is saying that only staff will have access if needed, right, probably, it's gonna be.
Yes, right.
You want that in, in a motion, Cal?
Uh, that might be good, I see Tony shaking and said.
Yes.
I'll move that, so move.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, no objections here from.
No.
I don't see that he's so quiet.
Any more questions? Do you have any more questions?
No, and you still like the computerized meters, huh?
Listen, I, of everything you guys have done, I love the computerized, because Cal probably loves them more than I do, but I think that was money well spent.
Well, and we've had several situations where people say how high the bill is, Mitch has gone off going and given them a computer printout, showing them exactly what days they had excessive usage, and they say, oh, yeah, well, this happened or that happened, and. And, uh, then they understand, we just tell them, you know, you've got a break, if it's, you know, after the meter, it's your, you bought it.
So overall, comparing the installation of these meters versus the way we used to do it manually, do you feel, uh, manually that we weren't doing that well?
Well, it's hard to do it manually with a twenty year old or thirty year old meter and get an accurate number.
Right.
Especially in rainy season when they're underwater, or wiping them off, and trying to put a tube down there to read it, that's where now they're, they're electronic, so, without a doubt.
Yeah.
And, and we, I'm happy about your choice, too, so far, we've had zero failures, we've had one issue, which is really good.
Yeah.
Correct. Better accuracy.
Can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Hello, can you hear me?
Hello.
Yes. This is Ray. Yes. Can you hear me?
Can you hear us?
Hello?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Hey, anyway, uh, maybe, can, can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Couple of payback on that, and stuff, top of your head. Yeah, I don't, I don't see the billing, but you know, Cal, on, on, as far as the money that we're recouping on the usage.
You're getting more, uh.
I'm just curious.
It's, uh, and we're gonna do an analysis, so we know overall what, one that still.
Get it together as one, one stack, or. I, I get at least five calls, usually in every billing cycle, saying this, this isn't correct, we go out and show them, they're like, you used to pay twelve dollars a month, now we're paying forty two.
Right.
But it's, it's.
So we're probably thankful, mine is painful.
Yeah, so, and it's, it's easier to manage your utilities, so, they did, they're gonna have to be replaced anyhow, you could have probably done it cheaper, uh, but like Mitch said. Reading it properly, but they couldn't see it, how to read it properly, and, uh, but the meters really. And his comment about the ones that was selected, um, now he both have experience with another community. Because it's, it's a horrible situation, yeah, so. The other vendor you were, is those.
Very helpful, the only other thing is you moved the pesticide inside, yes, build a day, call me a day or so before you're gonna haul or spray it, and I'll take it out. He took the red pump, too. Oh, he did? Well, I'll fill it up, all right, I lose out, you're losing, so I'll fill it, tell me when it's getting time to double, I'll take it out for you. You gotta move the tank, I'll go, you think the work lift.
I'll just, I'll just bring it to the back and do it outside of.
Yeah, but, you can call me, let me know if I can, I can work it around the schedule. It'll probably, I think, it's gotta be, oh, you're gonna, every time I raise, you get on one thing. You ever filled it up like that?
So. I can read the.
There is a policy now, should be okay for it.
What's next on the agenda?
Uh, the next would be the engineer's report, uh, if you want to adjust for, uh, parcel thirteen, right now, we could do that, that's up to you guys.
That's gonna take the longest, probably, right?
They'll probably take the longest, yeah.
Why don't we do that?
Okay.
That's all right, but if anything else.
So we're gonna jump to attorney's report number eleven, and you have eleven and eleven B, uh, eleven B was, uh. The resolution, the resolution, or eleven B. B, I guess.
Yeah, eleven B, and also, uh, included in that is consideration of, uh, an amendment to the agreement, the sales contract, and other documents. Uh, and I think on the phone, uh, Lenore, my partner's on the phone, I think Francesca, Pasadomo, and Rich Yovanovich, Mr. Case's attorneys are on the phone, or, on the meeting, I'm not sure where they are, Cal, can you confirm that they're there?
Uh, they haven't identified themselves, uh.
Hey, hey, Tony, I'm on, if, if that helps.
Uh, yeah, now, if we do it one at a time, and follow to, was that you, Rich?
And Tony on also.
Cal, that was, that was me, and then Francesca also said she's on.
One at a time, if you're all talking, I can't, I don't know who it is, okay, uh, Rich, if you could say something, I'll identify you.
Okay, uh, I'm, I'm assuming that's Cal, this is Rich Yovanovich.
Right, I got you.
Okay.
This is Francesca Pasadomo.
Okay, thanks, Francesca, uh, nobody else now, let me get her name, and, uh. That's probably butchered it, but, uh, okay, uh, somebody else I got.
And this is Lenore Breakfield also.
Okay, who's this now? That, uh, Lenore?
Yes.
Lenore, please say something?
Yes.
Okay, that's Lenore, okay.
Hi, Cal, this is Lenore.
Hi, Lenore, I got two, uh, I've got two more callers that I don't know who they are. I've got Rich, Francesca, and Lenore, the other two callers, could you say something, please?
Dan Truckee.
Okay, Dan, uh, thank you. Okay, uh, I've got, uh, one more person, I've got, uh, Lenore, Rich Yovanovich, Francesca, Dan Truckee, uh, Steve McNamee, the two board members, Linda, I've got a guest, I, you know. We can't record anything you say, and then we've got somebody shy, and you're a re, if I didn't call your name, please tell me what your name is. Okay, caller A, we're just not gonna recognize.
Cal, for, for clarification, too, I think that's Mr. McNamee's wife, that's on the phone, Steve's here.
Oh, okay, yeah, I.
It's my wife.
Yeah, okay, uh, I, whatever it says, Steve, and, so, uh, I have no idea with caller A, so, just gonna go without it. Anyhow, uh, Tony, you're up with all of these.
I guess, and, and, uh, at some point in time, I might stand to be corrected by Rich and or Francesca with it, and also Lenore might pipe in. Uh, if you recall, we, the board approved an amendment, an addendum to the sales contract with Mr. Case to make the closing July fifteenth of this year, initially was August seventeenth. And there were some other terms and provisions and everything, that was the primary matter with regards to that, we've had a lot of activity in the last two weeks, uh, you know, substantial input and, uh, from, uh, Mr. Case's attorneys. Uh, from Mr. Case, and Cal, David, and Lenore, and part of that involved, if you recall, also the third amendment, the second addendum provided for the draft covenants and restrictions to be provided by June twenty fourth, and then the proposed final de restrictions by July fifth. So in that vein, and I, uh, was out of town half of last Thursday and, and Friday, uh, a supposed to be a four day weekend trip, got kind of, uh, up short, but for a number of reasons. But there was a flurry of activity on those days, and either June thirtieth or July first, we received the, uh, substantial revisions and edits to the draft de restrictions that were provided by Francesca and Rich. And I believe those, I sent out, I think on Tuesday or Wednesday, those went out to the board, I, I, once again, I shortened outline on the first two pages, but, uh, attaching the red line to edits. Uh, we, Cal, David, and I, in our office, looked at the proposed revisions, and we thought some were good ideas and accepted some others, we did not, and we've included that, provided that to the board also. Uh, also, since that time, there were a number of questions that were raised, or concerns raised, comments raised, uh, by, uh, Mr. Case's attorneys, based upon two things, one is their review of the title commitment, which was provided back in May sixteenth. Uh, which the time to raise title objections expired May twenty sixth, and, uh, no objections received, uh, but we received comments, and then we received a draft survey prepared by a, a very good surveyor retained by. Mr. Case and or his attorneys, we don't have a. We don't have a final survey that, uh, I don't, I don't have a signed version, I don't have a large version, I have a PDF. And since the time of both the receipt of the proposed revised restrictions from Mr. Case's attorneys and Mr. Case, as well as the comments, we've had a number of discussions with regards to the nature of the transaction, the nature of the documents, the scope of the documents and a whole raft of other items, including a number of phone calls and conference calls. And Cal, David, you jumped in too if I've not stated anything correctly. The upshot of that is we are, we have, our office has prepared a special warranty deed, we've prepared a closing agreement, we've heard the resolution to authorize the transaction, it authorized the chair to sign documents to effectuate it, approving some of the documents in substantially final form, including the deed restrictions that your staff is comfortable with after receiving the comments from Mr. Case's attorney, so that we'd be in a position to close on July fifteenth. Uh, there are, again, recognizing that the time to make the objections long since gone, we thought in good faith, because we'd like to achieve for the board. Uh, we've been trying to work with all parties work together and we've had some, uh, interesting discussions and times disagreements, but we're all trying to work towards the end goal of closing the transaction uh, in a timely manner. Uh, and part of the discussions involve the, an extension of the closing date to September ninth. That would allow further discussion and opportunity for discussion of some of these issues. Uh, one other aspect is the second deposit was due June twenty-seventh, it was not delivered. Prize, uh, there is a debt, uh, that's fifty thousand dollars and that second deposit gets delivered, it's deemed, uh, given to the district because again, the end of the due diligence period, and that was June twenty-fourth, it was due diligence period, and that's expired. Uh, backing up just a touch, if you recall, the original fifty thousand dollars deposit has been dispersed to the district, provided to Cal, the office. So we have, uh, again, a flurry of activity, a number of documents, uh, and there's a draft proposed third amendment to the contract that, uh, I've made some suggested edits this morning and, uh, only provided to Mr. Case's, uh, attorneys this morning. We received this yesterday after we received an outline from Francesca and Rich, which was sort of a capitalization, capsulization of our discussions everybody had on Wednesday, uh, with regards to this transaction. So with, with that said, the, the draft third amendment to contract is basically with, and subject to Cal and or David disagreeing and our approach is and recommendation is agreeing to, uh, extended closing date of September ninth, two thousand twenty-two. Uh, in that amendment, also having the buyer acknowledge at the time to raise title objections, uh, has expired, no written notice was delivered. And so the title was deemed acceptable that the buyer acknowledged that the second deposit was due, I think, uh, June twenty-seventh. Uh, it was recorded under the contract, the due diligence period expired June twenty-fourth. Now, and then talk about pre-closing cooperation, in the pre-closing cooperation, part of the concept was there are a couple of unrecorded documents, there's one recorded document, one unrecorded document. The, the recorded document is one, I think we talked about, it's a easement in favor of blue land that does not designate, oh, come on, back up. There's a consent to use the airplane club and that would terminate, model airplane, which that would be terminated. Secondly, there's this agreement between the old owner of the property, BRH and the district with regards to relocating with Union Road. The district is now the owner of the property, so and I'd asked David about, is there any need for that agreement anymore, and he said no. Is that correct, David? Right. So the, the pre-closing cooperation would be to terminate those two documents. And I'm not even sure if the second one needs to be terminated, so we're both parties to the deal now. Okay, uh, but that could take care of that, the gun club, uh, and as to the gun club, the third amendment would provide that unexisting easement in favor of blue land over at parcel thirteen. It says it's to be designated, it's called access road easement, to be designated by the grantor, which at the time was BRH. I think historically, we've all, we all agree that historically, there is a dirt parcel that sort of occur, they come off Union Road by the water plant, occurs to the northwest. And then that cuts, that cuts over a corner of parcel thirteen and then it continues on, uh, outside parcel thirteen, over the district property. Then it cuts a corner, so southeast to northwest. And so there's a couple of points of discussion, one is the agreement would be that we will work, the parties work in good faith to modify the grant of access easement to blue land to either relocate, relocate the easement to be contiguous to the east of the eastern boundary, that was run parallel the eastern boundary of parcel thirteen, not take that whole job. Uh, or alternatively designate and define the area of the access road easement by a sketch of legal description, which would be, again, this is sort of a rough indication of property, you have this little curve like this at one point and then over here, it comes here and then it cuts over here. So designate on these two areas, that was being the access road easement, it's over the paper, existing dirt road. Uh, so that's an alternative, and we think that's, uh, appropriate. Uh, with regards to restrictive covenants, this is, uh, the major, the, the primary concern all that Rich and and or Francesca and articulate their client's concern is that they believe that the covenants were overly restrictive and were problematic in the perspective, uh, this is the micro will take on it, they might give the details, that if the intended use of the property was not achieved for zoning perspective, then they'd be stuck with a, a set of covenants that would pose problems for them to develop the property. So the, the concept that they've articulated is that, uh, parties acknowledge that the buyer will be pursuing non-appealable zoning approvals, notice get it approved by the county commission, let the time run for somebody to appeal it, have that, not the appeal, so that the property or Mr. Case would then have a single-family project that permits no more than one hundred residential units, that's their intended use. And then it says, to the extent, following good faith.
Uh, one second, in your packet, you got a picture of the site.
Well, let me, let me go back, let me talk about these first, then we'll go back to the site.
Okay, that's, that's what I thought you were talking about, was the.
No, no, now I'm talking zoning now, we'll go back, I'll go back, that's a good point, that's ahead. Now I'm on the zoning, so it says that under the proposed draft, and again, I just got this yesterday, it's quick edits this morning, um, that to the extent that the intended use, which is a single-family project that permits no more than a hundred residential units, to the extent that Mr. Case's buyer can't achieve that. It says the parties agree, the buyer will have the right to develop the property as multifamily or single-family, not to exceed a total of, and so we left it blank right now. And that the parties agreed to limit the restrictive covenants to the use as either single-family or multifamily in denser restrictions and such other reasonable restrictions as may be necessary for sellers to satisf- safely and conveniently operate other properties within the boundaries of the district. I'm not sure what that relates to because I, what's in the covenant should just be this property. Instead, we were working good faith to try to get that. Additionally, there's a discussion about open space that buyers committed to set aside two areas designated as open space on the site plan be made available to the public in that at the board's discretion, the district's discretion, this open space will either be conveyed from the buyer to the district and utilized by the district in any manner consistent with the approvals of the intended use or retained by the buyer of, and we treat as open space and as a result of being open space, not having any utility or or O and M assessments on it, in the public space, open space, uh, as it may be amended, consistent with the district's methodology, it has to be something that Russwire can say, yes, there's no benefit to the property, therefore no assessment, that's without methodology experts, I think, recommendation or analysis, I think. And that's something I can't forecast, and Russ will say, or I'm sure he probably would, say it's open space and everybody benefits from it. And, and that's not unusual, uh, to have areas, for example, I have one district that represent, there's, it has a golf course on it. And so the golf course operates as part of the drainage system. So from the standpoint of imposing O and M assessments on that property for drainage doesn't occur because that's contributing to the overall stormwater management system. And so that's part of what, you know, Russwire can do in methodology assessment. Again, Cal, the site plan you mentioned, I appreciate you mentioning that, uh, that was in the packet.
That's in the packet that I gave.
No, that's a survey, it's a.
It's a eight and a half.
That's a survey, that's a draft survey that was prepared, uh, by Donald Santino, again, he's a good surveyor. And my version of outlining the green, the property, and then if you see on here, this is gray shaded area down here and this gray shaded area up here. Those lead back to strip road, so the concept would be getting back to the gun club that if the, uh, blue land would not agree to have the access totally parallel to the property outside parcel thirteen, then the parties would designate and record a designated access road easement over here and over here. But the, the first choice would be taken outside parcel thirteen, the second would be those two areas generally. Uh, let's see, then there's some other miscellaneous concept. Uh, so, uh, Cal, I think might be appropriate for, you know, for many questions, I hear Rich and Francesca articulate Mr. Case's.
Questions I know that's gonna come up with the amendment, if they don't get the zoning. Uh, does the language that you just suggested prohibit, uh, mobile homes, RVs, uh, does it prohibit section eight housing?
Uh, right now, no, and it would be, this section could be amended to say, right, to develop only as a multifamily or single-family development, number one. Uh, number two, uh, I, we can add in there to the extent, and I'm not, I'm not an equal fair housing expert, whether or not we can say prohibit section eight housing, we could investigate that. But I think Rich and Francesca will tell you that the county commission, uh, recently because of increased concerns about affordability for, I'll call it essential service personnel, law enforcement, hospital, EMS, fire, and Rich, I think is going through it now as a matter of fact, and I could be corrected by Rich or Francesca, that a certain amount of property, the county may be adopting an ordinance indicating a certain percentage of units may need to be those type. Not the section eight, but the essential service provider, and Rich, I may have the terminology wrong too.
Do you want me to jump in, Tony, or just wait?
Yeah, I think, I think it'd be appropriate, Madam Chair and Board, to have Rich.
Oh, now this, this is.
Uh, Rich Yovanovich is Mr. Case's attorney.
Okay, let me. All this little mumbo jumbo stuff. Um, I just wanna know what the primary concept there, what's, what's holding this thing up that we gotta wait till September? That you wanna extend it till September?
Well, the parties agree.
This is, this is important to this community, we can't, because somebody's not around, can't get at it, we have to get these things done. So, no matter what the issue is here, which I wanna find out what their main issue is and what our main issue is, and then let's.
Yeah, the September nine, and again, Rich and Francesca, that, being correct me, the timeframe for September ninth was to work through the issues that we've discussed, we've articulated, you know, working through getting a, if we can't get blue land to agree to have access office property, then we need to get the sketch and legal description and does create the document to designate the area.
And it's two meetings, so it's the second meeting after today and you're just getting things today. And to, oh, you don't wanna.
You don't wanna rush things out there.
Yeah, yeah.
And.
That's a little rushed.
Going another fifty thousand right now.
Well, I, I, I think if we could have the board, and I think part of it is, if we recall, initially it was August seventeen.
Right.
Uh, and, and we recognized also that Mr. Case wanted to move up to even June, we said, no, that's even too rushed, this was a rush, quite frankly, to get this done. August seventeen, keeping that date would have been a better date, but now because of these issues and recognizing, again, I, I take that our position on a number of matters, to make sure we don't have to have this fire drill rush again, to make sure we have these documents if the board is of agreement with this.
Okay, but what I, what I wanna see, what I would like to see is a priority list, okay? First, we gotta do this, like you were talking about these easements, then we gotta get this. Why don't we have a checkoff list so we can see how we're progressing? Otherwise, you're just throwing stuff at us and it's overwhelming me, I, I can't.
I, I would suggest, I would suggest everything is significant, never talk about, first of all, the initial deposit.
Significant, I want it in order in a checklist so we can see what has to be done, not just you giving me this, that I gotta read all the gap, I want a breakdown.
Okay, first of all, if I could just clarify. The idea of extending the closing date, making D of having many in the contract, the idea of the deed restrictions was something that recently came up in the last week or so, after we got the revision on July first or June thirtieth. And that allowed, remember these other issues, we talked about some title issues before, but again, those, and the objection, the title expired back in May twenty-sixth, but we were still trying in good faith to keep the project going, to try to work to those, and we've, we've had some good discussions, some, uh, I'll call it, heated discussions, but always in professional. But in the standpoint of priority, I think it's up to, I think, Mr. Case or his attorneys to articulate the priority of the items. So, uh, Rich, is that a fair, is that fair?
I'm sorry, Tony, I, I, you broke out, I should do what, we should do what?
Uh, the priority, like a checklist of priority of items that need to be addressed and what timeframe, it's like, again. So, I'm, I'm sorry, we did not have time to prepare that, again.
Not now.
Oh, we can create one afterwards, again, if the board goes through this and just, the idea is to have all this achieved by closing. But we would need to begin to work, talk contact, uh, loop.
I didn't mean for you to do it this minute.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Not this minute.
No, and, and, and so, uh, and as far as the status with the county, that's something Rich can provide so that you all have a level with that. And as far as working on any other documents, uh, we would just continue to pursue in good faith, yeah, do that. So Rich, if you, have I misstated anything, if you can articulate some of the rationale for, uh, Mr. Case's, uh, desires, the party's desires to extend the closing and the issue about the zoning and housing and the covenants.
Well, and, and Francesca will correct me if I get anything wrong, you know, the bottom line is, we need to make sure that the covenants are written away that if for some reason I don't get four out of five county commissioners to say yes to the hundred unit project, my client is not left with a piece of property that requires him to build something I could not get zoned. So we've spent some time with Tony and Cal talking about a plan B and articulating that plan B and the covenants. That's gonna take some time to, to flesh out that language and that, that is, that is something we, we need to get done in order for the transaction to work for both sides. Um, so that's gonna take a little bit of time. With regard to, um, the zoning aspect of the property, the county, I'm not, I don't need to do a growth manager plan amendment as part of the rezone. So I don't anticipate that the county is going to make a, set aside a portion of the one hundred units to be income restricted. Uh, I don't anticipate that, but, you know, it, it ain't over till it's over, as, as Yogi Berra would say. So recently, in the several projects that I've done to add density to a product, to a parcel, that did have a growth management plan amendment associated with it, uh, about twenty-two percent of the units were required to be income restricted, split evenly about eleven percent to those making eighty percent or less of the median income.
I'm not sure.
We lost you, Rich.
I'm not sure what he means about this eleven percent income.
Hey, Rich?
Lost you.
Francesca, Kevin. Did he hop off or disappear?
You think it won't be happen?
Let's, let's wait to get Rich back on, I'm not sure what happened, uh, he's confined.
Okay, and the other, the other thing is, I was kinda misunderstanding, right, and thought we were holding it up, but now it sounds like he's willing to change the closing date, I, I thought it was.
It's not me holding it up.
No, no.
It's a process.
Right.
Of us collide, to optimize in your need.
Okay, we can, on this audio issue, Lenore said she can't hear anything, so I don't know what happened.
Uh, I don't know, Sam, can you hear?
I can hear, can you hear me?
Yeah, and then it's gotta be out there, yeah? Well.
You know what? They just sort of dropped off.
They asked, um, Ray asked me that too, if that was on your end, and I, that was my answer, Sam can hear, so it has to be you. But if other people are in trouble.
We don't know where they are.
Yeah.
Let me write, send him an email.
I think Rich and Lenora and Francesca are all, you know, in Naples.
In Naples?
Yes.
So, Lenora, can you hear us?
No, I just got a text from her saying she could not.
I, boy, I, I don't know. System, nothing's canceled here, I mean, if somebody could hear, they, let me be out there, yeah.
Let me just see what I can.
I, I'm just testing, this is Francesca, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes. I'll back in on my cell phone, can you not hear Rich?
No.
Can't hear him, no.
The last.
Down to this and see what's going on, I'll be, just give me one moment.
Thank you.
Yep, sorry about that.
So, it must be a go-to meeting. Oh, Lenora's back on, Lenora said she's back on.
Okay, uh, I just don't think it's software, it's got to be, I mean, the software is not going to cut some people off, and not everybody.
I think we just have a brief pause. I've been, I've been out for.
I agree, but I'm going to take a soft meeting.
Hey, Tony?
Yeah, Rich?
Tony, can you guys hear me now?
Yeah, are you on your cell phones, not Lenora signed back?
I'm on Francesca's cell phone now, I just hung up, you know, I just spent, you know, five minutes being totally eloquent, and explaining all of our issues, and very disappointed that nobody heard that.
No, no, Rich, you don't understand, I knew you were, so I said the five minutes for you, and so, you don't need to say anymore, just kidding.
Okay.
The last part we heard was you started talking about the twenty-two percent set aside, eleven percent better or less, so if you can start from here, go forward.
All right, I'll pick, I'll pick up from there, so that must have been, I don't know why it got kicked off, but the, the county has, in projects where you were doing a concurrent growth management plan amendment to increase density, has, has required that type of a set aside for incomes, eleven percent at the eighty percent and below median income threshold, and eleven percent at a hundred percent and below median income, those were all rental projects, this would be a for sale project. A for sale project will not work if we have to set aside that type of, those, those number of units for income restricted housing. So, I, I don't expect to get that type of a requirement as we go through this process, but because this type of housing is so important, I don't know if a couple of commissioners aren't going to try to enforce that type of requirement on the property. If they do try to enforce that type of requirement on the property, we're going to have to walk away from the rezone, because, you, you know, you can't build a project that you have no chance of making money on. So, we needed the Plan B, which we've been working with Tony and Cal on, coming up with a Plan B and the covenants. Because as the covenants were currently written, we had, we could only build a hundred single family homes on the property, and if we lost the zone, we essentially had a useless piece of property that my clients basically spent three million dollars for, and I don't think that was ever anybody's intent when this contract was entered into. So, we're, we're trying to make sure that we could come up with a Plan B that everybody can live with, and that's going to take some time to work through, and ultimately bring back to you all to make sure you're comfortable what Plan B is, so that's why there's a request to extend the closing date, so nobody's rushed. We can all think this through, and we can make sure that everybody's happy with Plan B, everybody's happy with Plan A, but we need to make sure everybody's happy with Plan B. I think I've summarized the issues, if I've missed anything, Francesca can jump in, but those are globally the issues, I'm not going to bore you with the specifics, but that's globally why we, we've requested and worked with, and I think, I think Tony and Cal are supportive of moving the closing date back so everybody can get it done and get it done without.
The board's going to have some questions, right, one question I would have, and I can't recall, because there's been so many discussions and going back and forth, may have just been internal conversations. Right now, the property is on partially conservation district, partially RT. As I read, as I read the land development code, in private ownership, single family homes can be developed on the conservation zone area. And right now, the RT, multifamily units can be developed. So, assuming forsaken discussion, worst case scenario, you're not happy with the zoning or entitlements that the county commission wants to approve, and at the board meeting, you say, the county commission board meeting, you say, we're withdrawing applications, forget we ever came in front of you. Do you all have a concept plan for that? That would be Plan B, if you're using the existing zone.
Right, right, and we would, we would, we, we're working on that concept plan, and, you know, it doesn't happen overnight, I mean, we, we scribbled it on, on, on a piece of proper paper, but, you know, we got to test it with our, with our engineers to make sure it actually works, and that's why we need a little time to get that to you, Tony, and to Cal, and then ultimately to the board for review of that concept plan.
And, and I guess from that perspective, is there a ballpark, I'm not understanding, except, is there a ballpark number of units that you're looking at conceptually, again, for the multifamily on the RT and the single family on the conservation area?
Tony, I don't know that we've come up with a specific number yet, it really comes down to what will fit and, and work from a, you know, we got water management issues, et cetera. So, I'd hate, I'd hate to guess too low, and I'd hate to guess too high at this point, so, if you could just give us some time to actually lay it out, that would be great.
And think from the board's perspective, I know, I know that number of questions is, the key issue is, the only types of uses on that property would be single family dwelling units, multifamily dwelling units, and, you know, and typical accessory uses like garages, in-home occupations, and things typical.
Right.
Nothing else.
We, we would expect that the covenants that would go on the property would include those limitations, we would not get every permitted use in the RT zone.
Or in the conservation, because there's other funky ones.
Correct, 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 in any of the zoning districts, we would, we, we would expect during this time period that we would restrict the permitted uses that we could do as a matter of right under the existing zone.
We weren't expecting, I mean, you would do.
And that's why I attached the exhibit to the contract, because that is a hundred percent where I'm at. Whatever we're talking about here is just that the cap doesn't approve it, otherwise, we're cool for a hundred units. And all this work now will help the whole thing go faster, we may get it on the market next spring.
I have one question, earlier you mentioned income restricted, and.
Yes, ma'am.
And what, what you, can you define that or simplify it for us?
Yeah, let me, the, the Cuyahoga County median income for a family of four is ninety-eight thousand six hundred dollars. So, what the county has done on some of the rental projects that I'm taking through right now, apartment complexes, have said that roughly eleven percent of those units have to have the rents limited to base upon a hundred percent of the median income, which is ninety-eight thousand six hundred dollars. A rent for a two-bedroom apartment at a hundred percent of the median income is twenty-two hundred dollars a month for an apartment. Now, if you go down to the eleven percent, that would be at the eighty percent or below category. I believe that rent for that same two-bedroom apartment would be sixteen hundred and fifty dollars. So, it's not, it's not anywhere near section eight housing, which would be serving those who made probably fifty percent or less of the median income. And in those other projects, it's only that percentage, the rest of the units are at a market rate, and those are all rental units, and those are projects that are probably anywhere from two hundred and fifty to four hundred units that I've done, so, yes, it's a significant percentage, but there's many, many more market rate apartments. I don't think that that's going to happen on a hundred unit project that's intended to be a for sale project.
Yeah, the intent is for sale, though, isn't it, not an investment for rent?
Right, it is, correct, I, but I, I could see, I could see the board trying to be aggressive and say, we, even though it's a for sale project, we want you to do the same level of income restriction. And if they do try to force that, because remember, I got to get four out of five county commissioners to say yes to my rezone request. If two of them decide to play hardball and say, you've got to give me a certain percentage of these for sale units, meeting an income threshold of whatever they pick, and we can't make a financially viable project, we have to have the ability to walk away.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anything we can do since we're a governmental board?
Michelle, I'm not sure if it's clear, yeah, I'm sorry.
Is there anything we can do as a governmental board to assist this rezone?
Yeah, and the initial contract said that, you know, that any of the plans, applications are subject to the approval of, of the district as the seller, including anything prior to its submittal to the county as part of rezoning. The, I think the initial concept and one of the outlines, and I don't believe it made it to the third amendment, was that the district would support the application and, you know, consent to whatever's necessary. That, those are, that's sort of what, you, you, you agree to whatever they submit, as opposed to you, you look at it, review, make it submitted. I think the, maybe the middle ground is, that we talked about before, is that Rich said, and I think staff would say, we, the board needs, would like, need to approve what that hundred unit concept plan is going to look, at least say, okay, we will support this hundred, which we already have, site plan, this is supportive. And then also say that we will also support Plan B if Plan A is not acceptable. That's the concept, I think, Rich, is that a fair, fair statement?
That's exactly it, Tony, that's exactly it.
So, the board, and, and from the standpoint, then, of the board, if, if the board looks at and says, okay, this is, Plan B is prepared by Mr. Case and his consultants, we like it, we will support this app, we will support these utilization, that's the straight zoning with the uses for single family, multifamily only. So, it'd be a site development plan, there'd be plating, all kinds of other development approvals you, yet need to be obtained, water management district permits, and just a number of other items. And the Plan A, which is the site plan, and that's not going to change, I would submit, that was approved, that was attached to Addendum number two. That site plan shows two open spaces, although it's not really identified as such, and we might need to pin those down, and also shows the hundred units, single family units on there. So, that would be what I would submit, that the board could, the board wishes to say, we support this plan being, going forward.
Well, it's a good way to get Plan A through the rezone.
Well, I think it's rich articulated, and in, in, in Cuyahoga County, it's unusual for a couple of aspects, one is, it requires a majority vote of the membership of the board, not just the board members present. Contrast that with Lee County, Lee County Board of County Commissioners can do a rezoning based upon just a simple majority of the board members present. So, if there are three county commissioners in Lee County present, a two to one vote, rezones property. In Cuyahoga County, it has to be at least four votes affirmative, a three to two vote to approve a rezoning in Cuyahoga County does not approve a rezoning. It's a, it's a higher bar, Rich and I have always enjoyed that bar, haven't we, Rich?
Uh, I, I don't know, you usually, you've usually been against me, Tony, so I, I, I.
Yeah, so that's why I enjoy that.
I, I, I've never, I've never enjoyed that higher bar.
Big facetious, Rich.
But it is what it is. I, I'm teasing.
Yeah, it has been in a way, I mean, for years and years and years, I mean, this, I, the last thirty-five years, I'm over forty. So, to the extent that, that the district would be willing to say, we support the submittal of an application for rezoning to get the entitlements to do a hundred unit, single family project is articulated on, on the Addendum number two, that can be achieved, and then say, once the board approves, an alternate Plan B, then the board could, as part of that approval, say, we will support it, but we won't know what that is until we come up with that, that needs to come up, be, be provided prior to closing, so we have all that in place.
Terry. Shock out of what Plan A would be. May I?
Well, Rich, did I misstate anything, just let me know.
No, I've got, I've got an eleven o'clock call, I'm going to jump off, Francesca knows all the issues, if you have more questions of us, Francesca can answer them. But if there's any, you know, anything that you need me to say in the next two minutes, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Hey, Terry.
Uh, Terry.
What, who's that?
That's me, Sam.
Oh, Sam, yeah, you have a question?
It's not really a question, I just wanted to, you know, I don't have a problem with this, this is like the third reiteration of the, of the agreements, et cetera. I think the problem we had was when we saw the, the covenant restrictions that came on the second one, in which they basically said at the end of, of two years, if they weren't able to get a, the, the rezoning, that all of them went away, and I, I don't think any of us were in favor of that, we need to have some control. So, this actually, actually is fine, in the fact that it is, it gives Plan B, which is multifamily in the RT zone, and single family in the conservation zone, so I don't have a problem with it. I think the problem that most of us had, at least I did, was the complete gutting of the deed restrictions, and it just seemed like all of the, all the work we did on the deed restrictions just kind of went away in the second reiteration of the, of the revisions.
Rich, do you want to address that, or?
Well, and, and that, and I understand that, and Tony expressed that same concern, and now that's why we proposed this Plan B option, so both sides are protected.
But, but Rich, I think part of it is, we, based upon your revisions, Francesca, your revisions, we accepted some and did not accept a lot of them. And so, that, I guess that's the question, is what we sent back on the fifth, is that something that is acceptable to your client from the, the concept of how we're going to approach deed restrictions? I think that's what Sam.
Well, you know, Tony, I, I think in fairness to us, conceptually, I think we're all on the same page on how to go forward with the concept. I don't think we've agreed on the exact language yet, but I think we've come up with the same concept on how to get there.
Well, and, and, and recognizing from the standpoint of the concepts, I think we talked about, the board wanted restrictions no less than, but also no more than six months. And that got deleted, I think, in your, completely. That's one of the salient points they talked about, was that aspect, and, and is there a statement or position you can take on that now, and say, okay, that's an acceptable prohibition, leases no less than six months of duration?
Well, Tony, I, I, I've got to jump, I don't think we're, we're, we're ready yet, and I don't want to negotiate this at this point, you have not faced this with my clients. And I really would like the ability to talk to my client about the pros and cons of, of what you're proposing, and, and I'm not familiar with everything that came back, Francesca is, but I'm not familiar with all of the strike through and underlying versions that have gone back and forth. So, look, our, our goal is to get exactly what Plan A was approved, so, I think we're all on the same page that we want a high-end, nice community. But I'm sorry, I do have, I've got to get on this Zoom call.
Francesca, take it home.
I'll stay on.
Okay, thanks, I didn't, the board, any other questions?
Well, what I'm hearing is, on the, the Plan A, you know, if, if that income restriction goes into play, that means you can have, you know, the rental units, and then what are we going to come after that and say, on the covenants, we want a maximum of six, or a minimum of a six-month rental, I, I don't understand.
And I'm not, Rich is more versed in that whole issue than the plan, than when they're requiring, that setting aside of rental housing, but I think the concept would be to sell to people, and that they'd still be owner occupied, it would still be a, it wouldn't affect the rental period, but we're talking about the houses would need to be sold to people in certain income levels. But, and, and typically, what I've seen, and I'm not trying to pitch it for anybody, but when you have a community where it all has to set aside units, to sell them to others. you have a community where developers have to set aside units, to sell them to others, they want to maintain the same quality generally, because it affects all the other values. You know, it's fine, if I'm buying a house, I'm, well, I'm not in those income restricted areas, and I want to buy a house, I want to see that my whole neighborhood, whole community has good values. So that's, I think that's something the developer will want to see.
Right. What was that, what was that, living in this community?
Right. Rich used a good term, high-end, high-end community, solely for a single-family, multi-family.
Hey, Cal?
Yes, sir.
Cal, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay. He was talking about apartments. This isn't apartments. There's a big difference. In Key West, when they build apartments, that concept is true, but I don't think that's accurate for residential development. I think it's only for apartments or rentals.
Yeah, what Rich said, and Francesca correctly very wrong, is right now, that the, the time that the county commission tries to impose those, if they wish, is number one, if a growth management plan amendment is needed, and he did not believe one was needed in this instance. And number two, right now, it only applies to rental projects. But you can never tell what the county commission will try to, you know, ask a developer to provide. I think that's what he was saying. He said, right now, it does not apply to, to owner-occupied or fee-simples ownership. It's just rental when you have a growth management plan amendment. Is that my recollection, Francesca?
That's, that's correct, Tony, and, and the nexus would be that, you know, if you're asking for more density through a growth management plan amendment, and it's a rental product, the county wants to be able to be setting some aside for your nurses, policemen, folks like that. So we're not anticipating that those obligations or commitments will come into play for what we're trying to achieve for this project. But like Rich said, and like you just acknowledged, Tony, very well, that, that ultimately, the commission will be, will be voting on this. So the, the Plan B is merely to provide some flexibility if they try to impose restrictions that, that just are not going to be workable. But I don't think there's any, oh, I was just going to finish up. I don't think there's any question that, that we're committing to only providing a residential product, multi-family or single-family, whether it be the 100-lot layout or the new layout that we're, that we're devising right now, just for purposes of the, the Option B plan.
Yeah, for clarification, Francesca correctly very wrong, clarification, Plan B doesn't require any rezon. Plan B takes as long as.
The purpose would, that's exactly right, Tony. The purpose would be that it be entitled so that we would not need to go through another rezon process. It would be, it would be straight zoning, but further limited to what we've agreed to as part of this call, single-family and multi-family.
Yeah, and if you, and if you don't have to go to the county commission, the county commission can impose additional requirements. And typically, we have a straight, a zoning district that allows uses as a matter of right, say, and we limit it to single-family. Those RT has a bunch of other uses. We would say, this is, it's not going to be all these other uses. So that's the contractor you have with the property owners and the covenants, and the county's approval of that project would then just be a site development plan and planning process. Now, the plats go to the county commission, but those are all usually on the consent agenda. And technically, it's a judicial act, but there's very rarely any contribution or attention paid to those. Right, that was just what I, we're racing.
Tony, I have a question.
Yes.
The question would be, if we had to go to Plan B, and this may also be for the other, the other attorney, if we went to Plan B, and it's already zoned RT, can the county change that zoning? In other words, and say, okay, yes, it's already zoned RT, but you're going to have to go along with our new master plan where we require 22% to be in these, in these areas?
I'll, I'll let Francesca address that. I would probably agree with her.
I would say there, there's, there's no right to do what you just described, other than if, if there's legislation that is passed prior to our plan being approved. I'm not aware of any pending legislation that would, that would line up with what you were just describing, that those, those policies take a long time to flesh through the process. So I wouldn't expect any new policy like that to apply. As of today, there's no way that it, that what you just described could be imposed by the county legally, and I also don't foresee that there is any possibility within the timeframe we're talking about where policy like you just described could be applied.
Yeah, and following up on, I, I agree with Francesca, and following up on that, and let's see if Francesca agrees or disagrees, the property owner can make an argument, it's called the Burgh Harris Junior Act in Florida, that this legislation, if they do adopt legislation saying all property has to provide this type of, that arguably could be inordinate burden, which is something different than taken by eminent domain, something different than number's condemnation, that adversely affects the value of the property, which the county would be on the hook for compensation, arguably. Francesca, do you agree?
Yes.
Yeah. And, and local government, by the way, example, local governments have been hesitant to adopt a lot of stringent vacation rental regulations, because that's exactly what happened, especially if you look up an Annemarie Island, in that area there, they got sued, and a whole bunch of dollars got paid off, because there were no regulations against vacation rentals, and they started imposing them, prohibiting them. And property owners said, whoa, we bought this property, investment back tax expectation under existing regulations. And I'm sure Francesca has other examples of that also.
That being said, Tony.
I'm sorry.
I would say, that being said, that you're talking about vacation, I think that we definitely don't want VRBO. That's why when the lease agreement needs to say, you know, a longer lease, so that you don't end up with VRBO over there, because that's, that's a disaster.
Yeah, again, I think we've made, made it clear to the, to the buyer, that six-month, minimum six-month rentals, and, but there's some question that was raised in our discussions about whether that's a marketable product from their perspective. I'm not taking their position, but that's something that was articulated, that making a minimum rental six months was problematic. Again, I'm just repeating what I was told, and if I was, if I'm wrong in my recitation, I, again, stand to be corrected, but the VBR, VR, VRRO is less than that time, but still.
I think, I think it's safe to say, just Francesca speaking, that we, we certainly understand that both the board's concerns, and, and as Tony's articulated them to our side. And, and, and I, I wasn't part of prior meetings where they were discussed, so I, I deeply appreciate that, that concern. Let me, let me circle back with my client after this, and, and his broker, and explain why the six months and the no VBRO and all of that is, is important to the board, and, and we'll come, we'll, we'll continue to work toward a middle ground. I think this is an important discussion to, to have, so that I am well-educated in where you're coming from.
So, Tony, what you're looking for today is approval of the Third Amendment. Well, no, well, it will be a Third Amendment, but radically different than from what's in this document here, because we've talked about a lot of different concepts. And I appreciate Francesca, at my request, putting it in writing, we had the outline, and I appreciate her doing it on short notice, and I was in meetings after that yesterday, and then scrambling this morning to get all these goodies together. So I would suggest the concept would be, I would go down, let me just go down what you have in front of you, and what my thoughts are, and Francesca, if you can follow along.
Yes.
And, and Francesca, what we're talking about, what the board has, is my edited version, I believe.
Yep, I'm looking at.
I think they have the redline version, it's actually grayline, because our color, our color printer is deciding not to cooperate. Yeah. Yeah. So you, you don't realize what happened, but anyways, that, one, two, three, and four, I mean, four and five were added by me. I think those are important to acknowledge. Under the, number six, the pre-closing cooperation, I think that's important to keep what I added at the beginning. Now, the, Francesca had the language in there, we agreed to terminate any of the licenses, easements, or agreements to which seller has actual or constructive knowledge. What I like, but I think we, I would be comfortable recommending, and after talking with Dave Schmidt, and just say, seller is unaware of any other unrecorded licenses, And Cal, we, we, I think Cal's gone through a double check also, other than the model airplane club, which is, that is recorded, but it's consent to use, no, it is not recorded.
I don't.
But I'm just saying, other than that, and the, the BRH agreement, which is not recorded, we're not aware of any other unrecorded easements, licenses. And Francesca asked a question, and it was a good question, I double-checked with David, has any authorization been provided by the district for people to use that dirt bullet grant, law trap? My understanding was no, there's no use rights provided. But there is that canal maintenance easement, but not, but that's, public doesn't have that right. Right. So, so that's, I'm comfortable with adding sellers unaware of any other unrecorded licenses, easements, or agreements, other than those two above. And then we can, then the gun club, I recommend that that language can be appropriate, and we'll get the, try to move it outside, if not, we have those defined areas. Unrestrictive covenants, I'd suggest, again, this is more global, we don't have the level of detail that we had in the draft that we're providing. The, I think we need to have, and say that it is solely multi-family or single-family development. And then the, and then from the standpoint of Option B, do you have any units or numbers in mind at all, Francesca, or does your client?
I'm looking at a site plan he just sent to you, me, and Cal. I don't see a unit count, and I'm, I'm hesitant to give a number just as Rich described without it being fully engineered, but I can, I can commit to this, Tony, I can say not to exceed what would be developable as a matter of right under the existing zoning.
With the EQR, sorry, 100 EQR.
Well, I think Mr. Case is saying no more than 100 units.
Yes. Same roads as.
Because it's still the 100, 100 utility ERCs is still the issue. So that's.
The financial intended outcome was to build 100 single-family units that gave a revenue model to the district in perpetuity. And if this plan didn't get approved, we would obviously move to the next best zone-approved plan, that'd be a really nice townhouse project with the same revenue output.
So I guess, from the standpoint, then, of six C, we can add, you know, solely and only multi-family residential, not to exceed a total of 100. That's the, I'll call it the option, in that the parties will, Francesca, when do you think your client can present Option B to the district for its review? We need to have that.
I'm speaking with, I'm speaking with his engineer on Monday, so I can get a timeframe for engineering out the concept plan that we have in front of us. So I can't.
Yeah, you can tell him, certainly. Here's, I think, again, I don't think anybody wants to go through a fire drill at the last minute. So we have, we have a board meeting in August, and what day is that, Cal?
19.
19?
19.
August, what day is that?
It's the 19th.
It's the third Friday. August 19.
I think that's reasonable.
Okay, so that, but we need to get that in the agenda packet for the board's review, no later than August 12th. Right.
August 12th, okay.
Okay, so that needs to be, no later than August 12th.
Okay.
Alternative plan, I'll call it.
Okay, I have a question.
Okay, great, so she can hear.
All right. 100 units, but not like Orchid Cove has four apartments, or condos in each building, so that would be 400.
No, no, this, this would be a total of 100 units. Orchid Cove is one building with four units.
Right. Oh, okay, so a unit is a single family.
A unit is, if you have a condominium, it's each condominium unit.
Yeah.
If it's a, a fee simple, a home site, that's a single unit.
Very good.
Yeah. Okay, so by August 12th, there would be submittal to the district every proposed alternative option.
That's the week.
Yeah, Cal, David, right?
What's that?
August 12th, the buyer.
Before the meeting.
Yeah. Would, would deliver this proposed, I'll call it Option B, we'll have to.
No later than.
Either.
They're probably going to, yeah, what can you email? I haven't sent it to you all already.
Okay, so then.
You sent me a site.
Okay, if we can, I'm sorry, if we can just. And then get this out. Yeah. And then, then it's part of this also, from the standpoint of the leasing, I think it's important to put a statement in there that the seller, they, I think it's important to have, I think it's important from the board's perspective, I don't mean to speak for the board, but from what I hear in the happy hearing, it's important to have a statement in there that the concept will also focus on the buyer preparing a plan and having a development scheme where rentals are, no rentals of less than six months. I think that's what it sounds like to the board. And so that the buyer needs to factor it in, and, and, so I think that's an important consideration, Francesca.
Okay, with the, David, they, with a multi-family being a point eight, you're actually looking at about 180 units, not buildings, but units that could be built.
120.
120, okay. Your math's better than mine, let's see.
I mean, but pretty much said, if we go multi-family, a town, two townhouses connected is a multi-family, right?
Yes.
But we don't have that described in our rules. It's not a condominium. Townhouses are not described as a point.
It's multi-family.
Multi-family. So it, so would be point A?
Yeah.
And so that, why would that not be okay? I mean, if we.
I guess, let's back up a bit. Let's not confuse density with ERCs. Right. Let's confuse it with ERCs. We're talking for units, which is, okay, that's a different concept.
Well, okay. I'm trying to see the difference.
He's saying 100 units versus 100.
I'm talking zoning. I'm talking zoning. Zoning, the density is, a multi-family unit is a residential dwelling unit, it's one unit. A single-family residential dwelling unit is one unit. So when you're looking at density, you're looking at residential units, whether it's multi-family or single-family.
We only need 80.
I'm talking only about density, Cal.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Can I step in real quick, Francesca speaking? I, I think that the, the ERCs were brought up only because Mr. Case had, had suggested 100 units was the equivalent from an ERC perspective, which is what's being enlightened right now, is not, is not in fact correct. So rather than committing to 100 residential units right now, can we, Tony and board, subject to, to what you think is reasonable, commit to the number of residential units that is the lesser of what is permitted as a matter of right under zoning, or the ERC equivalent to 100 single-family residential units?
Wouldn't that bother me again, Francesca? Because the original, back up, we could, the original site plan in the contract says 100 single-family residential units.
Right, right.
Okay.
But I get where they're going, I know it's not.
Okay, so what are you, what's your proposal?
My proposal is only as to the alternative, only in the event the rezon is unsuccessful. So with that, you know, preface, it would be that the density is equal to the lesser of the equivalent ERC conversion from single-family to multi-family, or what can be developed as a matter of right under zoning. Because as, as, as we said, the Option B plan is an as-of-right plan, what we can do without a rezon. But I also don't want to, to unduly limit that number to 100 when the ERC equivalency may not be 100. That, that, I'm just trying to accommodate.
But, but is it not to exceed 100, or you're saying that there, if the zoning of it is a matter of right, gives you 120 units, you want to build that?
It's the lesser of. So if my ERC gets me 180 as is being suggested, and my zoning only gets me 100, I could only do 100.
Okay.
Hey, Tony, or Tony or Cal, can I, this is Ray, can I jump in?
Oh, yeah, please.
Is Lindsay there?
Yes, yes. Yes, yes.
Lindsay, if you ask Lindsay, I know off the top of his head, he can tell you a pretty accurate number, because the, the question is, how much are you going to retail each one of those villas for, or those townhouses for, as opposed to the single family houses? And I've got to believe it's going to be more like half to maybe 60%. You're not going to get that kind of high dollar for villas or townhouses. So, you know, what number, how many units would it take to make that up?
The only thing I ever correlated, Ray, was the 100 EQR's. And that, that's going to generate approximately 200,000 a year after build out. So if there were 120 townhomes, the, the extra 20 townhomes, because you got the point two over the 80 EQR's, that's going to get you kind of a similar revenue model. That's how I envision this entire relationship. I come to you to help you convert this land to a revenue generating entity later on, and pay all your fees at the time.
No, I think he's asking how much you're going to charge for the, the.
It's market driven, but I can't imagine if you go out and look at anything, BRH is doing, if they're doing a two-story townhome, it's probably going to be 500 at the start or at the mat right in there, and then new stuff, new housing's going to be 650.
Even for the townhomes, yeah.
Townhomes are going to be maybe, might even into the 400. They, their new stuff is not cheap, and the supply chain, they're not thinking about other than this.
Yeah, that's, I understand, I understand that. Let's see, and then there also, it says seller and buyer agree to limit restrictive covenants to the foregoing use, so basically it's more global, but. Foregoing use, and other reasonable restrictions, maybe necessary for sellers safely and conveniently operate other properties, I'm not sure what that means, Francesca, but I think it also.
And, and we can change the language, I'll explain the purpose, and it was, it was as, it was based on, I think, Cal and the engineer's input yesterday, in that the restrictive covenants were, were from our perspective, a little bit overreaching in the level of, of like building permit review, and down to, down to stuff like that, where it would significantly impact a builder's ability to actually market and develop this project if the district is going to be reviewing that level of detail. So my suggestion was that the district review be related to all items that affect the interest, such as easements, any infrastructure that it, that it may or may not need to operate in the future, so that there's a nexus between the review and, and the district interest. I, I, I think specifically like design plan review elevations were not necessarily something the district normally reviews, but were in the restrictive covenant. And I know in representing builders, that would be problematic. So that's the purpose, I'm happy to revise the language to, to kind of get to the purpose.
Okay, in, in other words, the operation and maintenance of district infrastructure and facilities.
Exactly, yep.
Okay, okay.
Tony, I have a question. So, so basically you're saying either 100 units of single family homes, or if they have to go to multifamily homes, or multi-units, we're looking at 120. Is that, is that about the, the size of it?
No, I, we don't know, regardless, I think it's going to be no more than 120. Because I think it's not to exceed, you know, the conversion, ERCs or 100 units. I think, is that correct, Francesca? Yeah.
So can we just put in there that it, not to exceed 120 multi, multifamily units, and 100, and 100 single family, and, and be done with it?
Great, clarify it, but that's good.
That, that hurt.
Okay, but, but here's, here's the problem, you can't do multifamily or conservation.
Right.
It's a single family.
Then say 100 EQR.
That's what she said before, equivalent to 100 or less.
Correct.
Francesca's language is good.
Yeah, Sam, did you hear all the discussion, Sam?
Yes, I did, I did hear that, yes.
Okay, so I think Francesca was indicating the board seemed to have a consensus to agree with that. Okay, open space, I think Francesca, we just need to designate open space. I didn't, it's hard to read, maybe my eyes are getting old, but if we can do the open space on there. And I think that pretty much wraps up the major items. Lenore, anything else you think we need to address that I've missed? Is she still on?
No, I think you've covered it all.
Okay, what I would suggest.
Tony, did you hear me?
Yes, thanks, Lenore. What I suggest, at the risk of the board throwing, they have at me, because this is not a simple redraft.
Yeah, yeah.
And Francesca and I, we can all work on this today and Monday. I suggest we have a continued board meeting on Tuesday, so the board can see the document in front of them. Because I don't want any misunderstanding. Can we have a quorum on next Tuesday? Whatever time is coming.
I don't think you can.
I'll be here.
Ray and Sam are going to be out of town?
When do you return, Sam?
I won't return, I don't return until like the 25th of July.
I'm going to be out of town, but I can, I can attend virtually and I won't be driving.
We need, we need.
Yeah, we want to achieve a quorum, and my problem, this is, these are pretty complicated changes.
Well, then, how are you going to do it so fast? Now, before I was complaining that you went to.
No, no, we, no, we can draft it, well, here's the problem, so I think it's opposing me.
Right now, still, no, I thought you.
No, no, this is, this gets extended. What, that's my concern. No, no, if we agree to this amendment.
Oh, oh, oh.
And, and the first part is pretty simple, but we get into the whole idea about the covenants, development. I've, we have a lot of terms that the board has always been very conscientious about making sure that it fits with what they agreed to at the board meeting. And this is a significant transaction. I'm not comfortable saying, but Cal, me, Francesca, and Chairman Sign, we should stop having it in front. These are substantive changes, substantial changes. When's the next availability for a form?
After the 25th of July?
Yeah. Won't have anybody back by then, or?
We got the sign before the.
Spot.
What expires?
I understand, let me, I'm.
If they, you've just summarized the changes, and the board approves it, subject to, we'll send it out to everyone.
No, you can't do that, just, you can't.
That's not a vote, the vote's already been taken.
Yeah, but then coming back with comments constitutes a meeting argument.
Well, that only would constitute the deed for another meeting.
I'm, I'm not.
That, that we would include.
Tell us that in terms of that issue, okay? Because I don't want anybody attacking this board for delegating authority, which is inappropriate. Okay, that's my concern.
Are you coming back once?
What, seven?
Of July?
So I guess it's subject to the chairman's approval, or the final terms. Are you comfortable with that?
But the chairman won't be here.
But you, you, you'll see it.
As long as we get three.
No, no. You can't get three outside, you can't have the board, this, yes, 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 that's a meeting. Right. So what I'm saying is authorize the chairman to sign the final document after she's comfortable with the terms.
Okay.
Okay.
When is, when are you going to be here? Are you here next?
No, she doesn't need to be here, she, because she needs to, she needs to sign it.
Any change from any.
Agree to the change.
She can sign it anywhere, that's correct. And we may want to have a tapeless available for all of us to listen to. If you can send that out after today's meeting, Cal, to make sure we capture it all correctly.
Okay. So that's a, going to be a pretty lengthy meeting, I can't just cut out.
Send, I can send the entire.
Send the whole thing, I'll listen to it to this point. Okay, and it will be on YouTube.
That's fine by me, I've done it before.
Make sure everyone will look at it on YouTube?
Or they don't need to.
We're, we're, we're bringing.
For Terry, you, me, and Dave to do that, to make sure, after Francesca redrafts this. Correct, Francesca?
Yeah, I can get a draft to you shortly here, Tony, based on this conversation.
Okay, then you're going to work with your client and the broker on the rental issue, correct?
So, it, it's the board's desire to have that in the contract amendment, not as part of the restrictive covenant?
I think it's part of the restrictive covenants.
I, I thought so too.
Yeah.
Yeah. So then, and then I think we need to also provide language in there, Francesca, to have on August 12th also, parties work to finalize the restrictive covenants by that date also, at the staff level, to provide to the board, so that, that we have on August 19th, that we are really good positioned to close September 9th, without making all kinds of other changes. I think that's.
Well, okay, I, yeah, maybe I'm wrong, but this, this amendment is going to be approved once Terry signs.
No, the board approved the, the amendment, third amendment, based upon the terms and provisions that have been discussed today, we've all agreed, if I ever have a consensus. I've gone through, it's easy to go through, went through 1, 2, 3, 5, 6, and then we got to, the biggest issue was 6C, as revised, with regards to the restrictive covenants, the alternative plans and everything else, but I think we have an idea.
So what type of sentences? This is, this is an approved document.
Correct.
Lindsay's comfortable.
Well, no. And what's, Francesca kind of drafted, we're going to look at it, we'll recommend, Francesca, we recommend this to the chairman, the chairman will say, yes, I can do it, and both parties sign it, yes.
Okay.
And the idea is to do that by the favor of the next Tuesday.
Not waiting until August 17th to sign this. I don't think Lindsay.
No, you have, it has to be signed before July 15th. That's the bottom line. But another important track to us, I think, we need to get the additional deposit. Matt says it's due no later than Monday. So I think Mr. Case already said we'll water it.
I'll be at all hours tonight, I'll probably check and.
If you, or if you can FedEx it.
Yeah.
That'd be great. You can FedEx it. Francesca, if it's okay, since it's going to, comes to district, you send it right to Cal, is that okay?
Sure.
Francesca, they'll be with you?
I don't have a problem with that.
Okay, thanks, that makes it easier. One last check for me to sign. FedEx it, that'd be good, yeah, that'd be great.
So you need a motion?
Yes.
To authorize the changes discussed.
And adopt the third amendment to the contract, with the changes as discussed and agreed, with final review by the chair.
Okay. So, okay.
Call it favor?
Aye.
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 Ray?
Ray?
Is he, is he still muted?
I'm still. He could unmute himself, he's, that's what he did, he said aye on us.
So I really appreciate the board's patience on all this, and if I saw there was a little.
I don't appreciate the headache.
No, I appreciate all your work.
No, 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 Cal for looking hard at this, David has, also Francesca.
I'm back again, aye, aye.
Thank you, Ray.
Thank you.
Yeah, good. Thank you, Francesca, very much, and thank you also.
Thank you. I will, thank you everyone.
And the closing document, the resolution that you brought today, that's August.
That's August, yeah. Because it'll all be done before the closing.
And just to rephrase, the next step is that Rich and Francesca are going to put together a schedule of events that have to occur for the board, and then, Tony, you're going to put things that we have to do, just so that they have an idea and they track the progress of it.
Yeah, and recognizing that their timeline with the county is always subject to change. Planning on staff reviews, middle pre-ads, the whole nine yards, vacation schedules, planning commission.
Does the board still take vacation in August?
Yeah, but, but right now, it's a point where they won't be hearing most of these until September anyway. So by the time you get it in the door, by the time you have the neighbor information meeting, then you have to have the planning commission hearing, then you have the county commission hearing. We're talking November, December realistically, I think, quite frankly, before they go on their Christmas break.
What is the story with Louland? I mean, do they know all this is going on?
I don't know, Ray, have you tried to talk to Lou, or, we, we chatted about.
No, I, I haven't, I wanted to hear back from you guys. I really don't see a problem at all. I, I will definitely talk to him, once we know about the little easement thing, but I don't see a problem, and I don't think Lindsay's got a problem with it, so, you know, but I'll talk to Lou, it's not a problem.
Yeah, we need to.
Yeah, and I do appreciate the fact that Ray and I had a long discussion about Lou and the easement and use. So I think that that was very helpful for you to understand some of the history of all of it, so.
I believe we're at the engineers report.
All right. The first item is 163, 162 Sunset Bay, the update there. We talked a little bit about it during the approval of the minutes, but Cal's going to be sending a letter to the two property owners, get them to agree that we're going to split the cost 50/50 between the property owners and the district. We're the, we're in the process of preparing the plans and so forth for that, and also some of the other medial actions that we want to take in the Sunset Bay area as far as cleaning out the front control structures, and cleaning up the drainage well at this point. And that kind of leads into the K stormwater update. We do have a Zoom meeting scheduled this next Thursday at 10 o'clock, and Sam's going to sit in and represent the board on that meeting. Tony's going to be sitting in on the call, so we'll, we'll explain what's happening out of the case as far as the current drainage situation, talk a little about next steps and so forth, and what process they may have to impose upon us. And we'll just go from that and give you a report at our next meeting on the results of that meeting.
You're, you're going in there to talk about maintenance, right? Like we were going to say, that these, we were trying to, you know, bring it back, and maybe do some extra maintenance with those side culverts and stuff that we're doing.
And see what other improvements we may be able to make back there as far as other longer term maintenance type things that we may look at, so we don't have the potting of water on a regular basis. Because over time, those stitches in the backs, some will fill in a little bit heavier than the others, because the, the growth of the grass and vegetation and so forth. So anyway, we'll be trying to come up with a comprehensive plan with that.
And David? Yes, I have a question. The letter going out to 162, 163, is there a Plan B if they decide they're not going to pay it?
I don't have a Plan B at this point, that would probably be for the board to decide what the Plan B is.
There's a Plan B, but the, the other thing is the county won't even approve it the way it is, the pipe's too small.
Well, I understand that, but there's got to be a, we need to come up with a Plan B if they should decide not to pay it. I think we're being, this would be unfair.
Pursue this and get it, you know, through the county and/or legal system and get it addressed.
Yeah, I guess that really is a Plan B, as we go back to the way we started, that we, we would probably take some kind of legal action against them.
The, the one that you guys approved last meeting was an alternate option for them to avoid.
To avoid this. Have we heard anything from the owners?
Mr. McKinney that was here last meeting.
Yeah, Cal strapped in that letter, like he said, he could probably have it out within a couple, three days here.
Yeah, I'm sure Mr. McKinney told his neighbor.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure that rumor broke out.
Yeah.
Okay, good. You know, as far as the other stormwater improvements, we were getting set up first.
Sorry, if the board has already authorized pursuing, but this is an alternate that we've been told to extend to those two property owners. So unless the board says to change direction from that, we're going to move in that direction.
No, we want to go in that direction.
If they don't accept that, we're, we're going to continue to.
But I, I guess that was Sam's question, if it's not accepted, or, you know, I, I don't want to.
Not one owner, but not the other, so I agree.
I don't know.
Well, it sounded like you did, but I agree with you, I mean, we do, I agree with Sam, we do need to have a Plan B.
Yeah, well, Plan B hasn't changed. Yeah, it's the Plan A, that's never changed, at least the board has directed staff to change that. Yeah, it's the plan A, that's never changed, uh, at least the board hasn't directed staff to change that direction. You authorized us to offer this at Malap branch to try and get it taken care of.
And I would like to see them commit before we spend any more time in getting estimates and costs and everything.
Yeah.
Why should we do that if they're not gonna agree?
Right. Well, David.
We're kind of following that little path, because we also, as uh, you know, part of the drainage improvements we're looking to make at the other cul-de-sac and so forth, would be to put a county-sized culvert in and catch basin and some of that things, those other cul-de-sacs and a bit blocks. So again, we're we're kind of going down to, going down the same path.
Yeah, but I feel the the board, you know, oh, we didn't do it, they did it, and it needs to be addressed. And if we decide, which we haven't yet, to do the other cul-de-sacs, that doesn't mean they have the right to wait and say we're responsible, we're not.
Right.
So.
I do, if we, if they, if we are going to pay for those other cul-de-sacs, then I feel like we should put in that exact same one there, but they should take out what they have first at their expense. Now, we can hear you, Ray.
Where is the the fact that we didn't cause this problem, we're stuck with it, but we didn't cause it, and?
Well, that's about the same offer as we're given, fifty percent.
Oh, they don't.
They gotta take it out.
We don't take it out, it's probably.
It's about the same cost. The devil's gonna be on half the cost.
Right, nothing we can do, okay, thanks.
The only thing, point I was making was if we're not, if they disagree with it, I think that we have no other choice but to have uh the attorney and our Dave contact the county and and move forward with uh the the code violation. If they disagree, I mean, if they don't agree to, you know, paying half of it, I think we have no other choice but to go ahead and and get the county back involved. You don't need our, you don't need our approval, just go ahead and do it.
Yeah, should we put a time limit on getting a response? Like a thirty day?
Absolutely.
Yes, and then once that that time comes, if we haven't heard anything, a gay or nay, then we need to move forward.
I agree.
I think I screwed up.
No, this is right. B.
I'm going through a tunnel in Boston, hold on a minute.
Find a nice park somewhere.
Guys, we're.
What?
We're in a tunnel.
In Boston.
Holding up the meeting, Ray.
Sorry.
Get over it.
I think it's, it's, if you can hear me, it's time to, it's time to pursue it, okay? They're, they don't, they're not respecting us, let's be honest, they're not. And uh, you know, George has had plenty of time, and it's it's time to pursue it.
Yeah, but Ray, they didn't get a letter, and in all fairness, we don't know if the other resident is even in town or even knows about this. So let's, let's do the letter and give it a thirty day limit, and then we'll know when we're at.
And I think thirty days.
Okay, I think thirty days is too long, and I'm sure they did talk about it, but I agree with you, out of fairness, but it's time for respect. And I say ten days, and that's it, and then we pursue it.
No, because they're out of state. Yeah, that's too short a period, we'll do the thirty days.
Yeah, thirty days gives us basically almost to the next board meeting too.
Yeah. Okay?
Okay.
And uh, the letter does have, David's given us a range of what the cost would be, and and that's included.
Oh, good, does he get past that?
Yeah, so they they know that there's an expense that won't exceed, I think it was twelve thousand was the total.
Yeah.
It's anywhere from like from six to twelve thousand.
But you have to do it.
Bad, bad here.
What?
Excuse me, who is this?
All right.
Okay.
David, David, I have another question back on, what about the um, the the swale in the back with the um, with the big pipe that they used instead of the walkway, which was what we originally approved? What what are we gonna do with that?
I I've kind of laid back a little bit on that, knowing we, I'm trying to get over the one hurdle first, but uh, we can get in contact with Mr. Mess and tell him that that wasn't what was approved, that we need to.
I don't think it's him, it's the house next to him, and that their messes is here, and it's the third new house here that has.
No, it's 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 Mr. Mess's, Mr. Mess's house that he put that, that he put that big pipe in and then covered it over with dirt. It's the, it's the, it's the pipe that Mr. McKenna told Joe Levy about that has holes in the bottom of it that kind of acts like a French drain, but it's not a French drain.
You talking about between the properties?
No, no, it's uh, the the, what what he did was he applied for a dock license, and it showed an elevated walkway, which most of them do use. And for some reason, he's put in a decent pipe, covered pipe to cross over with, and I I think really we probably need to set him a notice of deficiencies that he's in violation.
I would say probably, no, you need to, I think that if, I would suggest asking the board for authorization to send that letter of deficiencies, because the board did approve a specific plant.
Correct.
Right. And he's 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 doing something differently that won't approve.
Doing the same.
I vote us to the county, and I think he also required our approval to get his permit from the county to the dock.
Correct, right.
So I think that's important, because I think the county issued a building permit premise on the district's proof.
Right.
Right, so I think that better needs to go to Mr. Mess.
Same thing's gonna happen, it's gonna happen, and then we've got the problem again.
So the attorney is suggesting a letter be sent and authorized by the board, uh, to the motion.
Motion.
I second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 We'll get that sent out next few days.
Yeah, I'll go.
Aye.
But there, it's one other thing, next, next to Mess's house, there's a new house, and then uh, the house next to it has existed. And he's put a big culvert pipe in the back, sits on in the field report, but meanwhile, these people are not there, they're from Alaska. Their swale is still to the top, and it's not fair to them, they, if their fault blows, it's not their fault. It's very.
One of the.
What page is this?
Uh, it's page.
Sure, it's the third house?
No, the third house, it's got a little bit of a high spot in the swell, siding that was done. They don't have a pipe that I know of, the last time I was out there to look, which has probably been a month.
Well, I'll I'll go look again, but I didn't get that pipe that's behind that.
If time allows today, I'll go, if something else, I'll go take a look on uh, I think on Monday, I'm gonna try to be down here.
Okay, so that's.
Yeah, it's one sixty-two, uh, fifty-three Sunset and the stormwater update. More just right, mostly, uh, House built fifty-three that dealt with stormwater wastewater twenty-year analysis, that was due in June, and that has been submitted. It's more or less just a report that had to be sent into the state, so that's uh, Cal's got copies of it reported, copies to him. I do have some cop, paper copies of it here, if anybody's really interested in maybe getting sleep tonight by reading the report.
And there, and there is no financial commitment or anything in there by the board, so any improvements that's identified, still has from the board for.
Dude, it was more just reporting on what your past, uh, past expenses have been as far as operation and maintenance on the system, and what you're looking to spend in the next uh, next basically twenty years. And what we did, we just took what you spent, inflated it, recorded what they, what we're looking at, it's about ten percent per every five year.
Yeah.
So that's what that turned in. I I want to jump over D and go to another item real quick, just I know there were some folks here from Sella Mars and Dar, but they may have left, or maybe they're online. Yeah, that's good. Uh, I got it scheduled just yesterday from the contractor, a little bitter on the project, and they are looking tentatively at a schedule starting near the end of the month. Uh, they gave me a date of July twenty-fifth, and they're looking for the work to take a little bit over six weeks or so, probably be finished the first part of September. Uh, what we'll be doing is setting up a pre-construction meeting uh, with with the contractor, we'll probably invite the folks from uh, Sella Mars and Dar to be a part of that meeting, just so that we can work out the coordination issues as far as when things are gonna be closed, because they will have to close part of the road down at any given time. So with that, if some questions on that, we'll jump over to the CIP and.
You have Dan Truckee on the line, is, Dan, did you have any questions on that? I'm not sure if that's why you were on or not, but Mr. Lee has left, so he's not here.
Okay. All right, I did, what was the start date for that, July?
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth, tentatively, you know, it's again, we're the rainy season, the weather sometimes gets in the way. I haven't spent a lot of time looking at his detailed schedule, but he's looking for about six weeks to get the work done.
Okay. All right, no, I, we've talked about what it consists of and everything, so I think we're all good there. They're gonna put the trough in, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yo, I I would imagine the first thing they'll do is uh, cut out for that trough, do the trough work, then they'll take out and do the, do the paving portion of it.
Okay.
And.
All right, very good.
When he puts together his communications uh to the board, should that go through you, Dan? I think you're the vice president, I'm not sure I have Mr. Lee, Frank, I'm not sure I have Frank Scott.
Uh, your choice, your choice, I guess, whether you go through me or go through Frank.
We might, yeah, we'll probably reach out to both of you, just to keep you informed that you guys have decided what's to come to the meeting, or both of you.
Okay, that'll work.
All right, then we, if nothing else, we can tell the conference, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, actually, for you, Tony.
Yes.
I just want to make sure that this isn't precedent setting that we're in charge of this drainage, just because we're doing.
This is a drainage project, this is.
Okay.
It's a paving, I think the only drainage component is the inverted V.
Just, yeah.
No, this is the, this is the surface only, just the. No inlet, something like that.
Yeah.
Okay, there's a little bit of modification, the inlet to receive the trough, that's minor.
Good point.
Uh, CIP.
That's why I always carry that, I carry my agenda book.
But hello?
Yes, I'll, it's over there, please.
Who is this?
Uh, this is caller two, and you, caller twelve, I guess. Um, a lot of other people dropped off, you need to identify yourselves, please.
I don't think so.
Okay. Uh, okay.
I had a CIP discussion, I think Michelle wanted to talk a little bit about that a little bit, and uh, I, I got extra copies of uh, the the list of that, of the CIP, CIP projects, if anybody needs one. I have an interacting. Oh, okay.
I just thought it was important, you know.
With the loan, probably, catch the loan and so forth. Yeah, and we probably uh, need to look at reprioritizing some of them, you know, the costs are probably getting to be a year and a half, two years, and we've got a lot of changes in that, but for right now, uh, I think three main projects that we we have in mind at this point is the CIP. Uh, of course, we got Sella Mars and Dar, which we already have a contract uh in place for that one. Uh, the next one is the K's range, and doing some of the work on associated with the K's at this point. And the third project's gonna be that water tank at the treatment plant. Uh, those are probably the three on top of the list at this point.
The the other one that I think you need to start moving up on is the isolation valves uh in your distribution system. Mitch really needs a reliable set of distribution system, and if you get a break, you don't want to shut down the whole system, be able to isolate where that is.
Right.
And they're what, twenty, thirty years old, so we should move that.
Okay, hey, could you go through those one more time? Yeah, could you tell us by number, by project number? Okay, last page. Okay.
Well, let's see, the the Sella Mars and Dar, okay, so, berberage, that's number one, and that's gonna stay right there.
Okay.
And then the K's drainage, that's probably, that's moving up to number two, number four. And that may not be the full project, it may be just a partial of that project.
Okay.
Uh, the water storage tank, I'm not sure we actually had that on the list at this point. Yeah, it was on.
It wasn't on.
Yeah, so that's gonna become a new number one, is the water tank. And we've had, we had some different phases, the isolation valve replacement, we we had included water system isolation valves, here fire irrigation system valves, even some wastewater valve replacements. The water isolation valve uh phase one is number eight, and we can move that up to a number two on that list. And we can work with uh, with Mitch to try to identify the ones that are most vertical at this point, and then decide how. Yeah, then we can decide how best to do those, whether it's something he can handle in the house, or whether we can take it, do some other things. That one, number one will go away too, right? Yeah, number one will probably go away, so we'll see that go away. Like I said, we we have this list uh, since we originally presented it, so. And I think actually number three, uh, we moved that uh, on the utility list.
No, it's back, I did not.
It's back, yeah, we haven't moved it, but that that's a very easy one to take care of.
Yes, you already approved that.
Yeah. So uh, at this point, those are.
Take care of the gate replacement also, that's not the sensing gate, that's your solid, so I remember what you said works.
That's uh, number four on the project. Well, that was actually a physical pest gate that was on the south end of the plane, I believe.
Or the electron part of it?
Yeah, I think the opening device.
So none of the opening devices work, they they've not worked for very long, but we've, we don't use them, I mean, we lock it back and forth, so.
Okay, you're a fine consultant.
Yes, it's.
Okay, so we.
So we can take that off?
Let's just take that off.
Number four?
Number four on the uh, utility list.
So you take him off.
Maybe instead of taking it off, move it down into one of the other, I mean, at some point, you hate to just take it off, it's.
I put it at the end, I mean, it's a, it's basically a luxury, like garage door.
Sure.
Base mark, I was like.
Yeah.
Put it at the end.
Maintenance, you gotta maintain those things.
Yeah, they do tend to be troublesome.
But you gotta put a battery out there, a solar trickle charger or something.
So uh.
I don't know if we must spend a lot of time with this list, but what we could do is sit down with uh, especially on the utilities, now with Mitch, and maybe try to reprioritize these things in the next month or so.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
No, but Ray's signing off.
The only thing, Dave, when you get that reprioritized, could you make sure you send one out to each of us? I I know you guys are looking at it, but we're not, I'm not looking at it here, I'm looking at the old one, and when you say number eight, it's not the number eight you're just talking about. So could you send it to us so we have a a copy of that, please?
Okay, actually, what I'll try to do is we'll try to pull something together for our next board meeting, and we'll just go ahead and uh, hit it on the engineers report.
Yeah, that'd be great, because as I said, I, it it's not the same as when you're looking at it there.
Correct, correct, no, I'll just update the list, I won't spend a lot of time updating the rest of the CIP report at this point. Unless there's anything else that includes the engineers report.
Can we ask, this is Karen, if one of you in case. Uh, yeah, what do you want?
My question is, is when, since on one sixty-two, one sixty-three Sunset K, when it's.
My question is, is when, on 162, 163, when it's going to be redone, are they going to bring it back to original grade, as close as they can to original grade? Or are they going to keep it as high as it is?
You're talking about the drainage between the two homes?
Yes.
Yeah, she's talking about the drainage between the two homes, I believe. It may be very...
It's higher.
Well, they did fill in some of that area, they had to fill some of that area to make Mr. Bass's driveway work.
Right.
Otherwise, he would not be able to get out of his driveway.
Right.
You know, poor site planning on somebody's part there, but that's part of that compromise of them splitting the cost.
Okay, because I, well, that's part of what I'm saying. Why was that really done? Was it for his driveway, or was it for drainage? That's my question.
Because they did it without approval.
Correct.
And it was for his, has nothing to do with us. We didn't have anything to do with it.
No, I'm not saying you guys had anything to do with it. I'm saying, when they did it, was it to enable him to put an extension of a driveway in there?
They never paid us about any of that, so I can't answer for them.
The other thing was that Joe pointed out that they have to have a certain amount of dirt between the end of his building, a certain grade, and they couldn't get the grade, so that's the other reason.
Well, our covenants and other things talk about that you have, you can't have your driveway within 10 feet of an easement. And then, you know, the debate was, well, you know, they're pavers. A driveway is a driveway.
But pavers, Mr. Mess claims pavers are not cement, so they're not permanent.
County says a driveway is a driveway.
I can't legally, I don't...
But that's what I'm saying. The real reason, my questioning is, questioning is why the real reason it was redone. And then at the last meeting, comment was made when George was up there, said he filed for approval, but it was denied because it was not a walkway, it was something else on the side of his house. And the audio was bad, so I couldn't understand what the denial was, that he was wanting to put on that side of the house.
Was it Mr. Mess, or was it the other resident?
George.
Lucy, our last meeting, Mr. Mess wasn't here, that I recall.
No, 161, George, when George stood up and was standing before you guys talking, and then Terry had said...
That's Gary, his name is Gary.
He submitted for approval, but was denied.
Yeah, that wasn't Mr. Mess, that was the other hole.
Right.
It was never denied, it was, it was, it was tabled at the meeting, it came up, it was tabled for two weeks, and then it was denied after, after we had more information.
Right, and that's what I'm saying, the audio was bad during the meeting, so I couldn't understand what was denied.
Them filling encroachment in easement, yes.
Yeah, encroaching in CID easement.
But bottom line, bottom line is, he got it, didn't he?
Not yet, well, yes.
Not completely, just tried to find a solution.
Right, but as I'm saying, bottom line is, things are denied, then they go ahead and do it. There's got to be, there's got to be some point where procedures are followed, and people are held accountable for it.
That's why we're going to go with a lawyer if they don't come to our agreement. We're seeking a compromise first.
I don't think we should seek for any of it.
And you need to write it up.
Okay.
Can you move on?
Yeah, yes, thank you.
This is Victor, and we've got to touch into financials. Now, typically, we don't get these done until 10 days after the closing of the awards, but one is relevant for this particular meeting. You're in pretty good shape, you got, and I know Ray's not on the call, but he doesn't like me to say that, but you guys do have money in your bank.
We're within budget, let's say.
You're within budget, so you've got a couple things that you've exceeded budget in, but overall, you should be in pretty good shape. No big concerns as far as overruns, you're basically 100% collected, and you are bidding better than the guaranteed rate on your investments. I can see a good 46, which is wonderful, but when I did look at other banks, Dave was looking at 0.01, and I had one at 0.02. Valley agreed to do 0.25 guarantee as a floor, and you see they're at 0.46 right now. Other than that, I'll answer questions.
Here we go.
If no questions, then we would entertain a motion to accept the audit.
Accept the financials as presented for audit.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
He had him hanging up there at 8:00.
Okay, oh, that was Sam, that I think.
That was Sam, that was for yay.
Okay. Next item is, the board asked at the last meeting if a revolving loan of credit would be available, which they're willing to do. So you've got in your packet, I sent out to you as soon as I got it, then you've got the packet now. But the five-year is the same as it would be, and a million dollars can be paid off anytime with a tax rate of 3.95. The option with the revolving line of credit, just using what you need up to a million dollars, the interest rate would be based on, for the first three years, then it would be based on a monthly repayment, and it would be based off of the secured overnight financing rate, the SOFR. And that's not bad. I looked at it like yesterday, on the 7th, the 30-day average was 1.26094. So you'd have to add 2.5 with that, and you would have been 3.76094, but you do have a four of 3.95. So that, that only affects you if it goes over.
Cal, are we talking about the, the floating one?
There's two, yeah.
The one that says that July 6th.
You're determined, you can't do it.
I wasn't sure on that. We can convert that to a three and a two.
Five-year max.
Yeah, right.
Okay, be sure.
Yeah, I knew about the five-year max, otherwise you'd have a bond that you'd have to validate.
Yeah.
So it, we could set that up however you want, but the quick answer is that it could be a five-year revolving line of credit, and we would set it up with those terms. That's the flexible rates, what you're talking about.
All right, but they're, they're still going to get their 3.95.
Yes.
But if the interest climbs, we're going to pay more than that.
Yes.
Exactly.
It would have, for it to be more, the SOFR would have to go up quite a bit.
Right.
At a point that it hasn't been in quite a while. It hasn't even been one until June.
Yeah.
I'm in favor of just leaving it at the 3.95, because we know what that's going to be. When you deal with the SOFR, you know, it could, it could go up, it could go down, it goes sideways, you know, and we have the right to repay it at any time, so let's just get the cheap rate, which is 3.95.
Yeah, I agree. The other side, the other side.
I mean, I don't even think we have to vote on it, do we? We approved it last meeting.
I think you do need, you need the actual term sheets in front of you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so, too, because I'm not sure there was a, you approved doing a loan, but not a specific one.
Right, okay.
Okay, well, then I'll move, we do the 3.95 loan, not the one with the SOFR.
So the five-year fix.
Yeah. Is there any comment?
Yeah, I'm against it.
Against?
What if the sale of the...
Oh, well, you raise rates.
No.
Yeah, but you can't raise...
Not when we can buy...
After raise rates, you can't do this anyway.
Yeah, but you can't raise rates for this coming year, too late. The assessments are already there.
I was leaning towards the one that, leaning towards that. I'm already asking you to take it, it's going to cost us 40. What'd you say with fees nearing in the first year? You can't, you can't back out anytime in the first year. You can't pay it off anytime in the first year. You're still going to have, there were some fees associated with that last time. We figured it out, so like, the first year would cost, with the $12,000 upfront, around $47,000. So it's still going to cost $47,000 out of our pocket to take the fix along.
With the interest rate.
Then the other thing is, you got at least a year before you could raise assessments. We put this off for so many years, we got to finally bite the bullet, start doing them.
I agree. We just looked at that CIP list, yeah.
Well, Cal, could you do me a favor and mute number 12? Because I, they're, I can't hear anything when they're busting, throwing in and out.
Ray, are you on the call? Well, who's number 12? Who? Somebody's hitting or saying or something, but it's showing that you're trying to talk. I don't know who it is, I don't think it's Ray.
So, in terms, just for one clarification, Cal, you need to get them to get rid of Renaissance. Sorry, what's that? The board Renaissance CDD is what's in both term sheets.
Where is that?
And if you go through, if you look at, yeah, at the bottom of the...
Oh, I see.
Repairs of all, assessments placed at Valley for Renaissance CDD, that shows up in both documents.
We're doing a six and a half.
I figured that. They're busy, too, it shows up in the preamble also, the fourth line.
Okay, so it's POI, CIB.
Yeah, just clarify that. We don't mind Renaissance Charles.
If we get it much, they pay it back, I like.
All right, so we have, Sam, did you vote on?
Yeah, you got the motion. In a second.
I made the motion.
Five-year fix.
Okay, you seconded it.
I seconded it, and we're out for the, well, comments.
Oh, and Ray just texted, I'm yes, I'm borrowing the million, you can vote for me.
You can't vote for me, that's just...
He was authorized to participate. While he was on the phone.
Ray?
Still three to one.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's still passed, but...
That was the difference, he's not present.
Yeah, because the audience is so small, we had, someone wanted to make a comment.
Okay, do I need that?
Yeah, we can hear you, I need to speak.
Taking the board's intelligence, I did not sign in, because I got here late, but I will sign in.
Yeah, I saw you coming late.
I'm confused, because I thought at the last meeting, the board had decided that if the sale of parcel 13 went through, we would not be taking out a loan.
Do you see the money in my hand?
No, no.
It hasn't happened.
So that's what, that's what you all decided, was if it didn't go through by this meeting, you guys were okay, right? Now I'm... Now I'm all within your...
All right, so, call for the vote. Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Three ayes, one no.
What, Ray?
It sounded like three said aye.
Ray, did you say something?
I don't see you...
I don't think you're on.
Ray's not on, I don't think.
I hope you, somebody...
Sam, you're only allowed one vote.
So it's 31 motion passed.
Yeah, which may want to note for you, for the record for the minutes, is that appears that Mr. Jensen, part of the meeting at 12:15.
12:01.
12:01, not long ago.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, I know that.
Yeah, I have the text.
We have the field managers' report?
Uh, let's see, you still got me. You've got the other, so, I, once I get these, I'll ship them off to you, and if you could sign and get them back to me, okay? Then we'll set up the closing, it's before the 15th, but I'll get with you when we can. And we might have to do it remotely.
Yeah, the term sheets, Cal, I think the term sheets are 15th, I don't think the closing is 15th.
We have to close by the 15th.
I don't think it says that.
Yeah.
I think it says, except this term sheet by the 15th.
Oh, okay, well, maybe we don't.
No, because they need to procure the documents, I need to look at them, I think the board needs to approve them. They probably have a resolution also to...
So we'll get it taken, Carol.
Yep.
You got a copy of the audit that came out, it's a good clean audit. It's, you look at their summary letter, they identify our role to make sure your quotes are good, clean, et cetera. What he's looking for is opinion, is that they fairly represent material respects and respective financial position of the governmental activities, which governmental activities is both your general fund or operating account, and the utilities. The respective changes in financial position and cash flows, and the monetary comparison, we did amend it, because you had so many changes, and, but it was all within accepted principles of the accounting goal. They said that all of their tests, everything looks good. You had a slight decrease in your fund balance for the governmental activities, general fund, but the, that difference, 126,000, that was projects that you've improved throughout the year, such as partially, it was the bond study, it was the assessment methodology, it was, you know, increases in engineering legal, and then some of the larger...
Yeah, so to cover the year, you need to take the...
So, and we amended the budget to do that. Other than that, I, like I say, it's a good financial position. Everything they say in their letter at the end says that everything was done appropriately, that they had no findings, so, any questions?
No, but I just remember one thing, the governmental way of accounting for this loan when it comes in, I have to research that yet, I started to, but you might want to check with them, too, but I believe it has to flow through the budget, and before the end, at the end of the year, it gets transferred out into the balance sheet. Right. But no, I'll hack you.
Yeah, we'll add a, an account, what I'm thinking is a third account, that would be a construction fund, but I want to get with the auditors to see how they want us to report that. We could take the million dollars, and if the sale comes through, that land can all go into your construction account, or your capital improvement account, and it will remain there, and then they just audit that, like they do the other two accounts.
All right. Aye.
Need to, I've already signed and sent the AFR in, because they, like you, it's, they've been late on all of their audits. And it's not just them, like, you know, all of the firms we work with are saying the same thing. I've watched some of the other, you know, my peers in the field, and they're having the same issues. They just, COVID had a definite impact on the...
They couldn't go out and do...
Yeah, they were working with minimal staff, and, you know, so they pushed everything to the last moment. So just need a motion to accept the audit.
I put out that motion to accept this audit as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Why am I getting two ayes?
Did you say aye twice?
Did you say aye twice, Sam?
I, yeah, I did, because I wasn't sure you heard me the first time.
It's because you sound like a turkey.
Yeah, I'm fishing. Aye, aye, yeah.
No, I mute I mute in between things, so there's no extra noise, and then I just, when I pop in when I need to vote.
Yeah, aye, got it.
Good, um, you want me to go through the, uh, the field manager's report?
Yeah.
Uh, just, if you want, I'll just make a few quick comments.
Yeah.
Okay, the asphalt in front of the valve box on, uh, 333 Newport Drive, uh, that's starting to pull apart, and it's being, uh, scheduled to be repaired by E and G on July 13th. So, uh, the bottom of the, uh, Union Road entrance signs been painted. The new stop signs for Union Road, it's one way. They're scheduled to be installed, uh, also when they come out to, uh, the asphalt back July 13th.
I think they were off.
No.
Yeah?
No, they haven't put in yet.
I think it's one of them.
He said that there's some dead fire push along 41 that remains, uh, and Soto agreed to replace the dead plants last month, uh, but still, there's about ninety percent of the dead are dead and need to be replaced.
He said that area where the water sits.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the freeze did it, wouldn't it?
No, the freeze affected the other ones, not this one.
Didn't affect them?
Well, I think they were already.
That may be why it's not been replaced yet, because the standing water is still there.
Yeah, how does you do it? Yeah.
Um, the, let's see, the painting of the center monument, uh, on Newport Drive, uh, entrance will be completed by the end of the month. And, uh, he says that the, uh, well, well, uh, it's been cut by Soto, so it's just retention basis.
There was two ayes in the.
Yeah, I heard in the paper reported that. Maybe it was cleaned up since this.
Yeah, it was. It probably was cleaned up, so this was.
This was said like the first of the month.
Right. Uh, the fifth is when he did the inspection. Uh, we. So we had, uh, Soto. Chris was going to take care of it, but we wanted to get it done as quickly.
Yeah.
Good, so Soto went out and cleaned some of the corners.
He did a good job.
Yeah, he did.
He did a good job.
Uh, let's see, the pond treatment increased. There was a request, what if you do it more often? They do it twice a month now, and if they went to, uh, weekly, that'd be two more visits as opposed to the two now is four a month. And so it would, uh, increase, uh, by $320 a month.
That's the pond plant?
It's the the ponds, three, uh, ponds that you treat for this part of your stormwater system.
Okay.
Right now, they're treated, uh, every other week. But if you wanted, the question or the request was to look at doing it on a weekly basis. And to do that, that's two more, and it's a hundred and sixty dollars per treatment or per visit, and so it would increase your cost by a hundred and sixty dollars a month.
But what's what's the part of that, like, aerator?
The aerators will help, but this, what they're doing is spraying for, uh, exotic weeds, like, uh, torpedo grass, uh, sedge, uh, things like that. Uh, they're also looking at algae control. Uh, they, that's primarily what they're they're treating, what they spray.
I don't know, because they, uh, one gentleman, they had a point, you know, draining the to save money, and it sounds like we're doing this aeration thing, but at the same time, we're also saying you might have to do more spraying.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but the aeration probably helps with the algae?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna say that.
Present.
You're you're talking apples and oranges. The aeration is going to take care of the green and the algae, but you're still going to have stuff growing like the torpedo grass and all the other stuff unless they spray it. It's gonna, it'll take over.
Yeah, and the algae is not going to get rid of the, or I'm sorry, the aerators aren't going to get rid of the algae in fact. They help control it, but, uh, algae is just a natural phenomenon that's going to be there.
So I I guess I'm saying that the aerator versus having this done more frequently, do we need both, or should we just have?
If it's one or the other, I'd say the aerator is the best way to go.
That's what I was saying.
When are they coming?
Yeah, that's that's fine, uh, and, uh, just waiting for the, uh, permits to be obtained by the electrician.
Yeah, I think we definitely have to try.
Yeah.
So just we.
Wait, just wait on it.
Why, it was a question that was asked, and I thought.
Yeah, that's right.
Um, so, let's see, that was the pond treatment increase, uh, and then we talked about the aeration. We need to have a permit.
I did send a change email to Chris about some of those potholes on Union Road and Solis. And I think he should be sending his guys out with some sack creep to fill those holes a little bit to stabilize them. So that'd be.
Talking about the water treatment plant.
Yeah, the water treatment. I actually worked towards where the old dormitory was. There's some, uh, potholes there instead of.
The gun club people are starting to wear out their, uh, the hardback that's there between there. It's starting to go. You know, I mean, I drive it every day, and there's at least thirty to sixty cars going back there, and it's all all gun club traffic, so maybe they should, you know.
Well, I was.
We're trying to run towards the bad ones. Sorry. And I'm also.
They pay for that.
Yeah, but it's not.
I don't. They pay for that, a lesser rate than I thought they should be paying for it. I'm just saying, when it comes time to grade it after this rainy season, they should be involved with that. That's all I'm saying.
But I think.
We do have some rock up at the plant, I believe, unless we run out of it. We've just been using to kind of help with some of that.
Yeah.
But it's there. You can really.
You can.
See, it will be by the time this rains.
There's there's a point on Union Road and then going south that we're responsible for it. Mitch put some black on what we let.
But they affect the whole road.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Just something to think about.
Okay, uh, any other questions? Hope, anything you want to discuss in the report?
Uh, one one question to the attorney.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, when, when are we going to look at the covenant?
The idea would be we'd have those August 12th.
Okay.
That agenda pack we have that.
That's the covenant. Okay.
Now we'll talk about.
I just had a note here.
Well, no, it's I don't know why it's a separate item here, because we already read about it last time.
Yeah.
And then we had revisions by the other side.
Yeah.
That's really not. Something for today.
Right. Yeah, I was just meaning that. I was wondering if we can talk about it the next meeting.
Yes, I'd say we talk about it the next week, because hopefully they will have it at the time for the.
Yeah.
So to have it all finalized by August 12th, yes.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Alright, so. Old business? You have any old business, Sam?
No, just me. I'm old.
Aye, aye.
We recognize that every month.
And thank you.
Alright, any new business? Business? Uh, supervisors' requests and comments? Thanks, Tony, Cal, and Dave for all the work you're putting in here. Appreciate it. I know I have a headache. Yours must be a migraine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's been interesting.
But I I thank you, so. Okay, now what?
I agree with that. Hundred percent, hundred percent.
Do we have any audience comments?
Yes.
I'm not quite sure.
Yeah, just come up here so the ones online can hear you.
Well, so we are.
Yeah.
My name's Joe Mazurko. Um, I'm a new resident in this area. I'm from Ohio. Um, my address is 326 Newport Drive, condo 1704. Um, I've been trying to follow your guys on, um, on Nextdoor and all that kind of stuff.
We're not next door. We're not next door.
I'll tell you. I'll tell you a little bit. I understand. I'll tell you a little bit about me. I'm a government official in Ohio. I'm an elective official. I'm on my second term. Small town, about 10,000 people, uh, annual budget about $7.5 million. So I understand what all you guys are doing here and all that kind of stuff. Um, and I'm following people on there that are, you know, trying to get on the board, trying to, you know, give rid of the C I D and all that kind of stuff. Uh, when I became a board member and elected official in my small town, we used our county as much as we could for financials. Pay taxes into it, and we do all that stuff. We used to have an engineer. Uh, we got rid of the engineer, private engineer person, because we use them, because when they get our stuff out, we got volume discounts. So I know that, you know, uh, this area here reminds me of my town. I'm in the county, and I'm in, we're far out of the reach, just like you guys are. Our area, you can call your county, but if you use them as much as you can, uh, you use their prosecutor. I don't know if you guys are assigned a prosecutor from your county. I don't know how the rules, the regulations are. I know by Ohio, our Ohio revised code, we're assigned a prosecutor that knows how things happened in the county over the years. This is not, this this rural area here is not anything that's not rural than fifty years ago or forty years north. So alls I'm saying is, I'm not here to, you know, say we need to get rid of the C I D. I'm not here to say we need to do this, but we need to look at trying to get all the costs that we can that we already pay taxes. We use the county as much as we can. And and that's that's what I would recommend to you. Um, I'm young still. I'll be down here a lot, but I I see this community again as one of my communities that I used to, uh, was born and raised since, real secluded. So.
A large county.
Um, our county is, uh, outer county. We have thirty-two townships and, uh, two villages. So I'm sure this has got to be like a township, if you got, what, nine hundred people here, I think.
Yeah. I mean, just real quick, Kyler County, there are only a couple municipalities, say Naples, say Markalining, City of Evergreen City.
That's it.
And those are the only, and then Kyler County, there's only four local governments from typical local government. I count the school district, which is one entity.
Yeah, but we're the largest county, aren't we?
I think, I'm reaching out something that we are.
Yeah. Area.
But alls I'm saying, alls I'm stating is that for our tax dollar, if we date, even if it's just, we should try to use their facilities as much as, because they have a broader scope of people.
But now we do know, like, let's say if we go out for bid, if the county has a contract with the vendor, we could piggyback, because we're another government entity. So we are taking advantage of that. But, um, some things with the county, I I guess it's a thin line, what the county will give you and what you want. It's like our water treatment plant. We've approached them about that, and their 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 feedback is it has to be a hundred percent, and then they'll take it over. So even now.
Right. Although I I understand that kind of stuff, but what I'm saying with the roads and with your water situation and all that kind of stuff, the best thing is to try to piggyback with them, because if you already know next year's stuff that needs to be done, it's best to get on there, because when they send all this stuff out the bid, you you get a better number because of the volume discounts. So that that's that's all I'm here here to say. Like I said, I read things and follow things. There's some people's hearses names, and I'm starting. I don't want to do social media. I don't do social media in my town, because it's just, sometimes it's way off.
But we don't do it either.
I, listen, I I I got a few players that are on social media. I do follow that stuff on and stuff. So alls I do is just, uh, I pay attention and go to the meetings that are outside of my community, so, um, if any of you guys, my name's Joe Mazurko again, and if you guys want my call number.
One other question. In your county, uh, do you have so many board members that are, uh, identified as your district?
So, um, my community is Chester Township. We have three elected officials, a four-year term. We get elected every two years. Every, we're two years apart, so there's always someone new coming in every every four years, a two-year cycle. Uh, we follow, I was listening to you guys on the commissioners. We don't have to follow the commissioners. Our commissioners are recommendations, because we're our own community. See, that's what I'm trying to get the feel for here, is are we our own community? If we're not our own community, and we got to follow their regulations, we should probably be dealing with them more often than not, because their costs are going to keep our costs down in this whole area here. We keep our lawyer costs down. Trust me, I'm not against hiring and and holding an attorney. We we got the same thing. But my 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 thing is that I've seen over the years that just gets to be a way too much cost and a burden on the people of the area, so. I'm trying to figure out what's going on in this area, and hopefully I'll be able to talk to some other players. You know, when I say players, I just say people. Maybe I should say people. Players are good, because there's good and bad. So other people. And and that, so I'm just trying to follow. I'm just trying to follow, um, again, um, I I I commend you guys. You guys put up with a lot of a lot of scrutiny and a lot of that stuff. I I I do get that.
But here, there's five commissioners, and only one represents our district, so.
So that's what I'm saying. If we're following, if we're following Collier County, we should probably go to Collier County, because you guys are all elected officials here, right?
Right.
You're just like I would be. I'm elected official in my county, Chester.
Yeah.
And what I say goes, okay? And I have to follow our regs and our amendments, and we make our own resolutions. I understand your zoning. De restrictions, beautiful. It's a beautiful thing, but I don't know if you're going to follow the de restrictions of Kyler County, because they want nothing to do with you. That's what I'm trying to figure out, notice. I'm with Chesterland. I do decide, we decide, and what our community decides, that's how we stay. We don't follow Georgia County, which is, has our three. They can only recommend and tell us good stuff, what their plan is, their vision. We do what we want, so that's that's what I'm trying to get my grasp on in this. And you guys are trying to do something good for the community, and so other people trying to come in and stuff, but who do we follow? Collier, or do we follow?
I guess, real simple, we can have, uh, three hours of Florida constitutional law, of urban law, real quick. The county has zoning and land use powers throughout the whole county, except for the incorporated municipalities. Each incorporated municipality has their own land use and zoning. C D Ds have no land use or zoning or permitting authority in Florida. They're designed to do infrastructure. That's it, pretty much.
Wow, so we're we're pretty much following following Kyler County, so.
Oh, yeah, they, the zoning ordinance, they're all Kyler County, including the incorporated area building codes, Kyler County, uh, and.
Well, I'm having that too. You you just put a house in, and you got drainage in between it. Who signed off on that? Who signed off on the builder building that house?
That's an issue we're dealing with.
So, but that's Kyler County. They have to be doing that.
One real quick other thing, that counties typically do not like to go through the process of getting mother may I from all community development districts. I represent eight community development districts in Lee and Kyler. Lee County will not coordinate with the C D Ds as to building permissions. Kyler County doesn't coordinate with them generally unless the C D has an easement. Other than that, they don't. Bottom line. And even in Lee County, they don't if there's an easement.
Yeah, so.
And see, require you to do what you're doing.
Yeah.
Send them a thirty-day letter. Send them an email first, get a response, send a thirty-day letter, and then do it, and then just sue them. Yes, then they're the prosecutor or whoever will put an assessment on the property. I wouldn't waste all that stuff you guys are having back. But people should get this. It affects everybody in this room here. Don't, I'm not here, but it it affects people.
But it's it's like one board member said, we didn't cause the problem.
Like you guys got to enforce it, though. That's the problem.
Thank you. Nice meeting.
Alright, nice to meet you guys.
Okay, any any other audience comments?
Steve, I mean, we were okay. I was thinking about, uh, this, um, Stella Marison North project. It's going to last about six weeks. Um, those people are going to have a difficult time. Where are they going to park? I don't know if you guys are going to do those cul-de-sacs as well. You know, are just the street. I don't really know.
The street and the cul-de-sac.
Yeah.
That's all.
So they're going to have to move all those boats out of there.
No, the boats are in the parking lot that they own. No, it's not a cul-de-sac. It's a parking lot.
Okay, so then on the other end as well, that's not.
The other end is a cul-de-sac. We turn around.
Okay, the west one. Well, my thought was on the deal is if if there's going to be a six-week period of time where they don't have parking, I do have the property across the street from them.
Well, my thought was on the deal is, if, if there's gonna be a six-week period of time where they don't have parking, I do have the property across the street from them, um, if we wanted to work out something, or maybe the HOA would, uh, just sign up a liability letter, I could, I could allow them to park on, on the east side of the property.
I think you have to contact their board.
Just, well, part of it is though, it's not zoned for that, so I'm going, I'm saying, still, I'm saying.
Yeah, Dan Truckee's still on.
Dan?
Yeah, Dan, are you listening?
I am, yes.
Yeah.
Is that something you guys want to?
Is it a problem that you see happening?
Um, we, we may have a parking issue if we can't get down the street, so that would be great, Steve, um, I'm sure we would be, we'll get some kind of liability release for you.
Yeah, that's, uh, I, I mean, I can see that, the only issue is, it's not zoned for it, so that's why I'm bringing it up to the board, I mean, is it, would the board turn a blind eye for it, or the six, that sweep, six week?
Well, I, I think typically what I've seen is when, uh, communities, kind of association, other associations engage in projects that require the necessity of off-site staging and temporary or off-site parking, uh, I don't think the county have really this concern, I don't think they're gonna look for temporary use permit, David, what do you think? I mean, are we gonna need to get an S, SIP or anything?
No, no, we don't need to have anything like that.
Okay, it's an aside improvement plan, so.
Right.
Because it's the maintenance, is that it?
Yes.
Because in Lee County, if you, uh, if you use research, you're part of a lot of reseal it, you need to.
You have sidewalks there?
There is a sidewalk, and I, and we've driven trucks across from the stuff, and it hasn't been an issue, the only thing I can see is there, maybe the guy who's putting the blacktop road and put a little blacktop in there to get the cars over to start with or something, I don't know, I'm just telling you that that's an option. It's just an option.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it, Steve.
Any other comments?
Motion to adjourn?
Uh, looks like there's anyone on.
On line, yeah.
Anyone online, uh, wish make, uh, please identify yourselves. Done, then I guess we're open for a motion.
I second that motion.
Thank you all very much, forward to your patience on the case contract.
All in favor of adjourned?
Just, uh, a note, that has the wrong date on it, so, it would be, uh, August nineteenth, but, uh, so you're adjourning the meeting until August nineteenth?
Yeah, yeah, I noticed that.
See, originally I thought we were holding that up, and then when they started talking, I saw they were holding.
Are you guys gonna stand in trouble?
They're trying, yeah. I'm ready, I was just.